We'll start a prayer and a pledge led by Councilmember Pete Fish.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, we just come before you tonight thankful for the community of Goddard and thankful for the decisions that will be made here tonight. Lord, I pray that you would just bless each and every decision that's made. Let it be intentional and what is absolutely right for the future of our city. It's in gracious name we pray, amen.
Okay, item E, C, approval of the agenda. We have to add then item H1.
H11.
H11, sorry. That's the MIH resolution of support. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Sarah.
Second.
Second by Aubrey. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Item D, citizen comments. Is there anybody from the audience that would like to come up and speak? Come on up.
Hello, how are you guys this evening?
Good, Harry.
My name is CJ Wilson. I am the president of a production company LLC which produces the Damn Jam that's happening out at Lake Afton. I wanted to just take a minute today, and this is Christina, she's kind of my, how would I say, Goddard liaison. She helps me kind of figure out who people are. She's been a great help. What we're wanting to do is, of course, we're having a lake event, and this lake event will happen on July 21st and 22nd at Lake Afton. We have 10 different bands. It is a very large lineup. We have people like William Clark Green, L King, Cadillac Three, Lanko, oh goodness, there's so many Yellow Woofs, so there's a lot of great bands coming, and we've worked very hard. It truly is a labor of love, but what I wanted to tell you a little bit about is who we are. Some people do confuse us with the past Damn Music Festival. We are not the same organization or the same people. What our goal is, is to raise tourism in the state of Kansas. We're ranked number 46 in this country right now, and our goal is to raise that up. I cannot build an ocean or a mountain, but I can throw a really great party. So, I don't know if you guys have heard of Nation of Patriots, which is kind of where Goddard will become heavily involved with this. Nation of Patriots is nonprofits. We open nonprofits to have three to four different nonprofits involved. They get to use our platform, Nations of Patriots, one of those where they're passing the flag across the country to all 50 states to raise money for veterans. They've actually given back about $83,000 to people from Kansas needing help. So, we have teamed up with them, and they're actually doing a parade to the flags to come out and pass that through at our event, and we're very excited to be a part of that. Secondly, one thing I wanted to mention is that it's very important about what we are doing and how it affects Goddard is a big deal. When Country Stampede had their event, it increased their area, their revenue, their economy by eight to nine million a year, and that is our goal. We want to be able to ingest that into our county, into our area, and that's a big deal. Another thing to keep in mind is every single one of these big bands says "Goddard, Kansas" on them as the location. So, you are probably going to be pretty inundated with a lot of people, especially with 10,000 coming to the lake. We will not have motor boats on the lake. We will be a float party, but we won't be having motor boats. We do allow camping and a concert, and we have cornhole tournaments and a beach party, and it's going to be a great time. And we just wanted to take a moment to say hello, introduce ourselves to you guys, and then also let you know that we do put information in bags to all 300 of our campers. If that's something that there's businesses in town, if they would like to put, I know Christina's talked to people about putting things on their sign. Walmart has been embracing our event heavily and going to be doing some special things. So, we just want you guys to know that we want to embrace you, and if there's anything that we can do to be a part of the community, I know we've signed up for some chamber events and things like that, but if there's something that we can do to be a part of Goddard, we want to be, and we also want Goddard to be a part of us. You're obviously going to be getting a lot of promoting and advertising because every band says "Goddard, Kansas," does not say Wichita. So, I would love for you all to go to our website at thedamjam.com, take a look at it. I gave you some little flyers there that kind of give you information. There is an opportunity for people that want to volunteer. They can attend the event free, and we just want us to be a community together that we can make a big difference. I've been born and raised in Kansas. I've done festivals all over the nation, and one of my biggest goals is bringing one here to Kansas. So, hopefully we can make this happen, and I appreciate your time. Do you have anything to add in case I miss something?
I don't think so. I mean, Nation of Patriots, noon Friday.
Yes, good times. Come out and have fun with us. And if anybody on the City Council does want to attend, we will get you your tickets, and we invite you to please come out and see us and kind of see what we're building out there. So, thank you very much.
What was your name again?
CJ Wilson. It's short for Kerry Jane.
Is there anybody else?
So, I have a couple of materials I'd like to hand out to the council as well. I was unable to get the materials on the big screen, so I just want to add in front of them.
Okay, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Matthew Smith, and I'm the owner and operator of Knuckles Automotive Service located at 705 North Goddard Road. I come before you to speak about the recent construction project at 213 East Sixth Street and 209 East Sixth Street. The construction is for a storage unit facility, and the part in question is stormwater mismanagement. I was recently at my business on May 14th and observed that the rain had caused flooding onto my property located at 705 North Goddard Road. The flooding occurred at the south end of my business. If you look at the first sheet there that I passed out, the yellow portion is where the flooding occurred. Water from the rains have never caused this problem before the construction of a storage unit facility. There has been discussion in the past month or so about these conditions between me and other city officials. One interaction has been a discussion between me and the owner of the property. The summary of one of the discussions led to the discovery that the plans were not followed to spec and that the concrete pad that was poured in replacement of the ditch that was previously existing was not pitched correctly nor sunk into the ground low enough for water to travel its original path. The failure caused a lip to be made of concrete that is higher than the existing ground level. The combination of this lip and the pitch of concrete and earth has caused the water to shed from the north of the new storage building driveway. The new concrete ditch is the yellow, or the blue portion on the first page. The water that once flowed from north to south now has nowhere to go and is pooling behind my building and traveling to the corner of my building and parking lot on the south side of the building. The owner of the storage unit proposed that since the concrete was already in place, he could pour a lip onto my property to flow water, but I declined this offer as it would not change the water flow. It would be construction on my property at a working business. The discovery of the problem was brought up before with city officials. Further construction proceeded, but the work, so was brought up with city officials before, but the construction continued to proceed. Now a fence exists with the incorrect stormwater management. I presented these facts today to say that the construction project that my neighbor has built has caused flooding onto my business's property and that the cause of this is an incorrectly followed plan for stormwater management. I'm at the risk of flooding every time it rains and at the risk of deterioration of my property and the impeding of my business, which is my and employees livelihood. I ask the City Council to take these matters seriously as what is done here sets precedence for what will be done in the future. If a plan is laid out and the plan is not followed, then we must hold those that did not follow it accountable for their actions, and swift action is needed to be taken, and the result will be property damage and loss for a business in the local community. I ask that the council work to correct the draining issue swiftly and with oversight from the city to ensure this action is corrected in the right way and not just what is convenient. Thank you for your time and consideration and all you do for the city of Goddard and its community. I hope we can reach a resolution on this matter before any irreversible damage is done.
Mike, is this the item we spoke about earlier?
Yes.
So, the developer and/or builder are aware of the situation?
Yes.
They did not follow what the city said, this is what you're required to do?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so what ability, because this, they didn't follow what the city said, but I understand it can be a private civil matter. What can we do to make sure that they do what they were instructed to do?
So, typically, this is an interesting situation because typically, like you mentioned, it would be a civil matter if one individual did something on their, improved their property in such a way to impact another property. Typically, we'd say that's a civil matter. What's unique about this is that there's an easement there. We have a storm easement in that area, stormwater easement, and so easements are on private property. I'm sorry, I just think it's convoluted, but easements are on private property, but there's infrastructure in that easement that can be privately owned or owned by the city. It can be owned by Everji or AT&amp;T or Idea Tech or the city in this case, and so we have an easement there, and so when somebody wants to improve that easement, they have to follow certain engineering guidelines, and they fail to do that. So, there was an approved engineering plan in place, and a contractor started to implement that plan, and obviously construction happened at the same time, and then the final result of that plan was a failed enactment of the engineering standard. So, we reached out to the concrete firm, the concrete contracting company, to say, hey, you messed up, you know, and not only that, but we also reached out to the developer and said, hey, the person you paid messed up. And so, at this point, what we are doing is we're working with the developer and the concrete contractor and public works and the city engineer to rectify the situation expeditiously but also correctly, because we don't want to rush something that could be in a permanent down the road and still be a failure. So, we need to address the situation because we can't really put Band-Aids on a situation. Once it's been engineered correctly, if it's not implemented correctly, we can't just keep stacking poorly contrived engineering standards on top of it. So, you know, I may have missed, but Harland's on my ride, he's the engineer, Brooke Vanberg's public works director. We are working very depth with the developer, and we're going to try to mitigate this to make sure it's done correctly. And there's two issues, of course. There's Knuckles Automotive, but there's also Johnson's that has an issue as well, and so these are two separate.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, they are. And so, those are two separate projects that we have to remedy.
Remedy, okay.
Yeah.
Do you?
Go for it.
So, when I spoke to you earlier about talking to the developer, Legali, what was his, was he aware of the problem?
Yeah, so he was aware of the problem, and I don't know if he was aware to the extent of the problem, because I called him, left him a voicemail, and he called me back and said, oh, I'm working with barber engineering, which he is, and city engineer, which he is, to help remedy the problem, but the bigger overall problem is that they're mostly aware of is Knuckles, but they're not necessarily as aware of the issue that's coming from Johnson's, which is the fact that they built that lip up and it's blocking water from actually going into the ditch.
Sounds like it's pretty simple, though. We had our specs, Harland, correct, and the contractor didn't build it to where.
That's the bottom line. We had an approved plan back in November.
Yeah.
And then he had his contractor go out there unbeknownst to us. I mean, not that he necessarily needed to notify us when he was going to go to work, but he went out and built a liner in this concrete ditch that was not to this plan, and their engineer even said, this was not to my plan.
Right.
And so, we're now trying to figure out how to remedy this. I have talked to Chris Bone, the engineer for the developer, and he had, I think, met with this gentleman and talked about putting an inlet in an area which would intercept this water that he is saying comes from the north, so that it would go into a storm sewer and wouldn't flow on into his building. So, that is something that has been discussed, and they are proposing to do that. They were gathering some more information on how deep the storm sewer is to determine, hey, would this plan work? That was as recently as April 26th. I don't believe they'd built that yet, but there is a plan to resolve that. But yes, the lip that he talks about is that the contractor essentially laid a form on the ground and poured concrete to it so it sticks up six inches above existing ground and blocks water.
It's eight inches.
Eight inches, okay. Eight inches, okay. And so, that's another problem to resolve.
Okay, so I guess, pretty simple, the contractor didn't do his job, right? And so what we need to figure out, I guess, Ryan, is what is the city's role in forcing this? Is there any power that we have over this situation?
I think this is largely a private dispute between neighboring landowners. Certainly, it sounds like we have been involved from the standpoint that we do have infrastructure in the area, so we have interest in ensuring that the developer does things according to the original plans, but I think that would be the struggle of our legal obligations.
Ms. Mayor, I might say, we have not accepted what's out there as it stands now. We have the ability, I think, because they built this in our easement according to a plan we approved. I mean, we have not approved or accepted that, in my opinion, and yes, they went in and probably the next, the week after we met, put a fence up, you know, that further complicates things.
So, we don't accept it, Ryan, and we still have control, right?
Well, if they built in our easement, we've got the right to tear it down. I mean, that's their risk if they approach in our easement. If we feel then that we've got a need, we've got the right to tear it down.
Okay.
So, where my property is, they are less than five foot away from my building. It is eight inches above where the ditch was. When they started to pour the concrete, I asked them to stop, but it was not right. They continued to pour the concrete. I had, at the end of my concrete, I had concrete sloughs that went into the ditch that drained my property. This weekend, when it rained, I was out with an air hose and broom sweeping the water away from my building so that it did not flood.
If it rains any harder than it did this week, I'm going to sandbag. I'll be putting sandbags.
I have no, I have no ability to get in there and sandbag. That's already concreted.
So, what's our next step? As I said, whatever our next.
I think we need to get with the engineer and the developer as well and explain to them that the channel, concrete channel lining that they've installed is not going to work, and it needs to be taken down to where, per the original plan, it said the grade would match the ground at the existing property line. That way, their water can continue to come over into the ditch.
The developer, your neighbor, should be, to be honest with you, so this isn't like some feud. The developer should be just as upset as you guys because the contractor did.
But there's been nothing done. So, you know, the bottom of the slough is supposed to be level with the ground, and we're eight inches, so all of the water that normally flows through that slough is backed up on the side of my building.
Can we put a timestamp on their response? Do you want them, they respond to so many days or?
Because aren't they violating basically the agreement that was set forth?
It's not really an agreement, though. It's an engineering standard. That's not a development agreement. There's not really a timestamp. I'm not sure.
I mean, is it an engineering plan, and I guess we can, I don't know, if we can write them a letter or something to insist that they have, you know, have this reconstructed according to the approved plan by such and such a time? If we can do that.
Because if they would have poured that where that hill started, it would have been.
Right. That was the intent all along. That's the plan we approved, is that the water from the adjacent properties would flow over.
And there's, so this morning, there was water, probably that much water.
There are pictures.
On the side of my building, there was this much water, this much of that slough. So, there was not much water in that slough at all.
So, what happens if we don't improve the line?
So, the options would be we vacate the easement and say the city has nothing to do with this easement anymore. It's a private easement. It's no longer a public easement. We don't want anything to do with it. This is a civil matter. Or, we say, based on what limitations we have or what we're allowed to do by law and by engineering standards, that you guys have to fix it, or we're not going to accept it, and you need to fix it. And in which case, I think the recommendation has been made that they need to cut that boom down and put riprap so that Johnson's can flow over the property line into the ditch like it's supposed to, and any mitigation that needs to happen in terms of engineering and construction north of this property in that open field to help mitigate the pooling of the water by Knuckles.
Harland, you agree?
Yeah, I don't necessarily agree that we can vacate this public easement because it allows water from the south, from down at Cedar and forth, water to come and flow through this, so we need this easement protected so that that water that's coming from other areas can continue to flow. I mean, we're certainly responsible, the city will be responsible for the maintenance of it once it gets correctly built.
So, what was, had the phone call end with Legali after?
So, I hit his voicemail. He called me back, and he hit my voicemail because I was on the phone with another developer.
We need to get him on the phone and tell him, I want to get this done. Let's get an direction on where we're going this week, because we don't need another rain, and then these poor people get flooded. So, and I can't imagine Mr. Legali is just going to try and be difficult because he's got a lot of other things going on here in Goddard, so.
He essentially needs to put the pressure on his contractor
Yes, yes.
to build it according to a plan that the city will accept.
Yes, okay. I guess I don't have an answer for you right now, but let's get back with you, okay?
Okay. And thank you for bringing it to our attention and the city's attention because, you know, that is something that developers, private individuals, everybody needs to be held responsible for their construction. Like, I can't go in my backyard and put up something to block the flow of water into my neighbor's yard. That's not okay.
That's correct. Thank you.
Yep.
Is there a possibility that we could put this on the next city meeting agenda?
We can definitely make a discussion item on it. Yeah, we can make a discussion item on it if the problem hasn't been resolved. That's two weeks from now. I want to have a solution to your problem before the next month, before the next meeting. So, how about let's reconvene on that if we don't have a solution by next meeting? But there's also, I'm not sure where that line is either. It's either a civil matter, or is it really what teeth do we really have, right? I mean, if it wasn't a God run, it was just a God run, right? Recommendation.
We would have to review that from a legal perspective.
So, certainly we need to build.
Other than, does the gentleman have an occupancy permit, or do we?
Yeah, he's got a building permit. Maybe get a hold of.
Hold the occupancy permit till it gets fixed.
So, theirs are teeth. So, theirs are teeth, but.
That's not very popular.
We don't want, we don't want, we're not, we don't want to hold things over people's heads, okay? We're all going to get along. We'll get the problem resolved, and we'll move on with our lives. So, if you don't bring up the problem, nobody knows you have. Yep.
That's what, what I would, after the rain, it was like, okay, that's too close.
Yeah, and it's perfect timing because we just had that big rain, and now we know we have a problem, so. Okay, all right. We'll be getting back with you, okay? All right. Thank you guys so much.
Okay, anybody else? Going once, going twice. So, okay, moving on. Item E1, Mayor's Award for May. Okay, so.
Do you want me to go down now?
We got to add the slide. Apparently it was.
Yeah.
We got to find that slide real fast. Apparently, we got to omit it.
Oh, one?
Yeah.
Mark is going to sing us a song real quick.
Do we need the slide?
Yeah, we'll put it up there right now.
Are you going to try some real man?
Yeah.
Yeah. If those work better, this means you're old.
Okay. So, you're really blind, geez. Okay. So, I wanted to start doing a monthly award for different members of the community that have been putting a lot of effort into a lot of things that are going on. We have several members of the community that I think need to be recognized for all of their hard work. You know, we sit up here on the bench, and we get credit and we get ridiculed, but we get a lot of credit for things that are going on in Goddard, and I wanted to, once a month, recognize somebody that was giving back to the community and hasn't been quite recognized. So, this month, council, staff, and members of the community, on behalf of the city of Goddard, I want to express our deepest gratitude for all of the wonderful work Amanda Treadwell has done for our community. Your tireless efforts and dedication have made a wonderful impact on the lives of so many people in our community. Your work in relocating the community garden and the renovations to the community center have been nothing short but amazing. Your investment of time, energy, and resources into these projects have not gone unnoticed. Your commitment to the community has been truly inspiring, and your contributions have made a real difference in the lives of so many people here in Goddard. On behalf of the entire community and the city of Goddard, I would like to express my heartfelt thanks for everything that you have done, Amanda. This is my honor to present the Mayor's Award, and I am so thankful to have you in this community and all of the hard work that you have put into all of the projects here in Goddard. Amanda is not here right now. She's ill, but I'm going to be making a video with her if I can drag her out, and I'll present the award to her, but I wanted to get it done, and so hopefully she's paying attention. Everybody wave to Amanda, and so we'll be seeing her here pretty shortly, so. Thank you, guys. Do you want, Mike, do you want to grab the award real quick?
I think we already sold it, actually.
A pretty fancy award. Man, I can't wait if someone gives me one one day. Okay. So, what do I have the pleasure to see my old high school grads for, huh? Did you guys just kind of spy on me or something? No?
Yeah, basically.
Basically?
Make sure you're all right.
Making sure I'm behaving myself?
Yeah.
Okay. Let's see if we can get the council's approval on this, huh? Is this good? Kid, no, you don't get funky. I like it. Aubrey, very good. Okay, Amanda, can you see it from there?
She says, thank you so much.
Very, very good, okay. All right, we'll move on to the consent agenda. I don't know. Has everybody looked over the minutes? Any accounts payable?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion by Sarah?
Second.
Second by Brent, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay. And approved. We'll move on to item G1, I'm gonna step out.
Sorry, technical issues there. I'm the Mayor and City Council, this is item G1. This is a cost share discussion for the Goddard Galeria Public Road improvements to remain extension. So a quick background, the Goddard Galeria is located west of 183rd Street, north of Perry Sunset Trail, south of US 54, east of Crown Drive. This area of development is located inside the Greater Starbond District, such that any developments that occur within that development help pay off the city's bond obligations with sales taxes and property taxes. More commercial lots are selling inside the Goddard Galeria, and as such additional roads are required to open up new lots for sale and development. Some of the roads in the Goddard Galeria are public roads, and other roads are private. The developer is paying out of pocket for the private roads, and the developer is paying $350,000 out of pocket for the improvement of the private drive. For the public roads, which are dedicated to the city, he would like to ask the city council to consider putting in two new public roads, with 50% of costs being allocated to specials and tax assessments, and 50% being paid at large without being assessed. This item was discussed on April 17th, 2023, and was tabled for further review. Thirdly, we're discussing the possibility of 50/50 split cost share for the improvement of Sixth Street and a portion of the seasoned road inside the Goddard Galeria Starbond District. Private drive is being paid out of pocket for around $349,000. The cost of the improvements for the public road is $547,000, which includes $55,000 for an extension of the sanitary sewer 200 feet south, avoiding paying higher costs for boring. Uh, $273,500 will be especially assessed against the commercial laws. $273,500 will be paid at large by the city. So the pink area is, is the complete Starbond District, that covers everything in this area. The yellow is the Goddard Galeria area. The blue is the private portion that will be paid out of pocket by the developer, and the green is the cost share portion that he would like the city council to consider. There's also that 200 feet of sewer. But actually, the cost of improvements will have to be considered as part of the tenant process. Leaking considerations, the City Council agrees with the proposal, City Bond Council can count with the city financial wise, a brush over those draft petitions designed by the developer, and the cost of the improvement will have to be considered as part of the tenant process. So it is recommended to the City Council, either one, deny the request for the cost share, two, approve the request for the cost share, direct staff to formalize necessary documents, and/or three, table a request again for a cost share. So that would just require a voice vote, and at this point, it will be open discussion, deliberation, consideration.
So can you go back to that?
Yep.
The lots of their, all those, what's sold, what's not sold, what has plans?
So, I mean, the developer is here? Yeah, feel free to come up, yeah, yeah. Want to reveal any of your trade secrets, you don't have to. Any questions?
Yeah.
Green will give you your pointer.
Uh, the, the Bronx is right here, it's already built. And Starbucks is being built on about two-thirds of this lot, right now. Uh, and we have about two-thirds of this lot under contract for a retail urgent care type of business. And that is all that we have so far. One, one thing I was gonna say, Benny Taverty used to be the top guy here Wichita for KDOT. We'd have lunch with him, and he'd always go, location, location, location. But right after that, it's access, access, access. And that's really what we're asking for here tonight, is to, the sooner that we can build this road and this, it will give another access point into Goddard Galeria, which is part of the whole Starbond District, to help collect more retail sales tax and for property tax as the improvements are built. And also, it will, it will, you know, of course, you can get there from Kellogg Drive, but just to have another point of access right in here, and hopefully it will lead them in there and even stay into that district. It will also help alleviate congestion right here at Crown Drive and Kellogg Drive. When I was here last month, one of the residents was saying how congested that point can be. I can only assume after a lot of the events at the baseball or softball facilities.
With the R cut that's going in, how will that, this basically the backwards L, the green lines, how will that work into the R cut?
How bad are you on that?
Was that included?
There really won't be any improvements relative to the R cut improvement that will impact. I, I mean, the, the limits of construction pretty well will be ended by the time you get to either of those green lines, I believe.
Okay.
There might be some work on the frontage road, but it would, just a small amount.
Well, I'm, I'm just thinking is, because the R cut was approved, how the road is now? And how, what, what we have in there, will, could that cause issues with the R cut?
I don't, I don't believe so. I mean, there's a crossover or median break right there at the west tip of the bottom of the L. There's a, there's a median break right there already in Crown Drive, so. I, I don't think there's any additional construction that the R cut will be doing that will affect any of this.
One thing, we would also, really assume if you guys approved this, we would immediately go forward with the design and engineering and get the petitions in place to get the construction going. And we would like to do it at the same time, we would correspond the construction to help save costs on those properties, for the private and for the public side. But with any luck, hopefully this year.
And if we vote no, are you still gonna do it?
Well, I wouldn't do it right away, for sure, no. Because we really don't need it, I mean, when you look at this plot, we can, you can get to all of this, and you can even get to everything from our development, really on Kellogg Drive.
Yeah.
So, what I would say, that could look good, well, it might just be a long time. And, and I think it would just behoove to do it quicker rather than later.
I think part of my concern with something like this is what precedent are we setting for future developers? You know, as far as other developments, there's incentives, you know, we want business to come to Goddard for sure, but what are we telling future developers if we help build a road that you just said we don't really need? You know what I mean? That, that's, that's just my personal concern, is, is, is this thing gonna bring 10 people in the next year going, well, you did it for me again, you should do it for me too? And then we're dealing with this every three months.
Well, I would contend that it would help promote the development in our development, just because you can get in and out of there quicker or easier, in and out of the Starbond.
For sure, but I would guess that the next person would say the same thing about their development.
Well, they might, well, and I'm not saying that you wouldn't, though. But also, I would also, with all due respect, you've done a lot. The city, other city councils have done a lot of the same type of improvements.
Yeah, for sure, for sure. I, well, I get that, but also, I don't think we should base all of our future decisions on what they used to do here.
Did you have, after the last meeting when I spoke, and I kind of mentioned something about maybe splitting it a different way, like assessing 50% to the future businesses, and then you as the developer taking on a chunk, and the city taking on a chunk, so that you had some skin in the game, and, um, because, I mean, it's hard for me as, to take taxpayer money and use it for, yes, I want to bring business in, and I want that for Goddard, but I also don't want to use taxpayer money to help the developer become more flush, if that makes sense. And, I mean, I, you're a businessman, I get that, you have to make a profit. But it's also, these aren't my dollars, these are our taxpayers' dollars. So we have to take that into consideration. And when we've got the single mom, or the single dad, or new families starting out, and they're struggling to pay their taxes and buy groceries because of inflation or whatever's going on in our economy right now, it's hard for me to take any of that money and use it for that, because one, I don't want to raise taxes. And two, you know, there's only so much money sitting there that we can use for things for the community as a whole. So that's.
Yeah, yeah, I, I get that. Well, probably a couple of items on that. We also, we're gonna spend about $350,000 to complete this. It's not, I think it'd be maybe a little different to your point, if, if you would do this and we didn't complete that. But I think along, we would correspond construction with all of it, so it sort of ties it all together. And really helps to get one step closer to completing the whole Starbond District development. Uh, the other thing is that you said there's whole, there's just a certain amount of money there. Well, as businesses come in, and they build, you collect more, you collect more property taxes, and really the pool of money gets bigger.
That's true.
So, so in that sense, I think you, it would probably have a pretty quick payback overall.
Yeah.
I mean, it's one-time deal, and then after that.
Yeah, but at that point, if that's the thinking, then why don't we just assess it all? And you're not gonna track that with, you know what I'm saying?
Sure, yes, I, I think my, to do it sooner than later.
Yeah.
Because we're only maybe right here right now, and I don't have anything else here. So the quicker you can connect that, I think it would really be better for the Starbond, for the state and for the city as a whole.
Micah, how many roads have we paid for, paid for already in there?
Oh, let me see, if I remember correctly, feel free, I don't have any for more than half years, and some of these projects have me on me, but Matt and Harlan and Bro, do you guys remember? Did we pay for this one, Crown and Perry Sunset? Matt?
Yes.
Yeah, we paid for those one, definitely, right?
Yes.
And this is all private here, so this is all paid privately, this is private. So is that, that kind of you the answer, the rest of it's unpaid? This road doesn't exist yet, there's nothing happening here. This was paid for by the city.
And the, and the frontage road was actually built with the KDOT corridor management fund.
And we, and I think we dedicated the land to the city, or my father did. Also, to one, one other point for Vice Mayor, we do have, we are doing 50% of that on special, so we do have some skin in the game on it also. That's why I was asking for 50%, not 100%.
Right, but that 50% is getting passed along to whoever.
Well, as long as we sell the lots.
Correct, yeah.
If we're still the owner of those, we will begin to pay those specials. Which we're willing to take the risk on half, because I think if the city pays half, we're willing to take a risk on the other half, thinking that it will be done in a correct timeframe.
Now, the dark blue, that blue is already done?
It is not done.
Oh, it's not done at all?
It is not done.
You're gonna do that?
We will do that.
So in essence, it'll make the property so fashionable?
Absolutely, it's just easier. There's just, it's sometimes almost impossible to sell anything until you have all of the points of access for, for the companies coming in. Uh, for example, like, the reason we built this back in 2016 was because Bronx wanted us to build it so they'd have your back road, back access points. And so, we did, and then of course now we got to start, I got two more contracts right now. And it does take a while, but it takes a while to get those, but I couldn't even, I don't believe I could even get those until I had that, that drive there.
So hypothetically, if Bronx asked you to do that, was there an incentive to do that for you?
Well, we did it because they were buying in front of us. And then also it led into the other lots being ready to sell.
Would you think that a potential new tenant, one of the lots there, could offer something similar?
Well, they, they might, but like I said, I still got, may, one under contract here, and I still got about an acre right here.
Right.
So, so yeah, it, it can. I just, my contention is that really, sooner is better than later, especially. Two points I pointed out, that you, when you're leaving the ballparks, that you can have another point to get over here to get to the Starbucks, Bronx, Big Area Queen, and whatever else might go in over here. And helps you leave, and you know, now you have the R cut, I, that will help quite a bit there. But even this was the second design for that, they were a little bit concerned, if I remember from the meeting. They were concerned about the Kellogg Drive, the cars flowing in and out on that R cut and stopping. So this would actually complete, give them another point to get out.
I think, um, just in my opinion, is, the sense of urgency is not, uh, an immediate need, right, you know, you said yourself, right now it's really not needed. As you develop that property, there could be, well, my understanding, correct me if I'm wrong, but as you develop and sell those lots, potential business come in and say, hey, let's do this, and then y'all can do business and, and negotiate the development that. But if we give more, something we can revisit in the future, if it's, that situation becomes more urgent, that's just my opinion.
Well, I think it, it would help to promote the other sales of lots, which really helps you collect more property tax, which helps pay for it. I mean, your, your return, you know, you, your return on your investment, even for all of, not just the roads you built in the Starbond, but for the other stuff that you paid for in there, it helps to pay the payoff of that back.
Agreed, that's what the debate. I think where I'm at is, if I was gonna spend taxpayer money, I'd be doing that sidewalk that they are, instead of, instead of paying for a road.
The one on the one and nine?
Yeah.
It's not structurally available. We can't put, we can't put a sidewalk there, the ditches and the yards, and we'd be taking people's yards to put a sidewalk in.
Yeah, that's probably another discussion.
So we can do that.
So, that's, that's, it's a lovely idea, but when you look at the structure and how it all works, it's, it, unless there's splitting sidewalk or something.
I can't think of a target for that. Yeah, laptop, getting over.
Any other questions?
I mean, no, I, I think I'm kinda, I'm kinda with Aubrey on this, it doesn't feel like, I mean, I'll be honest, it didn't help when you said yourself that you don't need it right now. Um, and as far as return on investment, the taxpayers that are paying for it don't see much return on investment for there being a road there, you know what I mean? Like, it's, it's their money that we're spending at that point, so. I mean, maybe in the future, I, I could see that, but if there's not a need for it right now, I don't see a reason for us to spend the money.
Vice Mayor?
I'm, if nobody else has any questions or comments, I think we can do one of the three actions and make a motion to, either deny the request for cost share, approve the request for cost share, and direct staff to formalize the necessary documents, or table the request for the cost share, unless somebody has a different motion they want to make.
So if you table it in, table for the next meeting? So yeah, if you table it in, table for the next meeting or the table?
We can table it as long as we want.
The need arises, ends, it just has a word.
Well, if we deny it now, yeah, if we deny it now, they have it fast. If we don't make a motion, then it dies and can be back on the agenda. If we table it again, it's put back on the agenda. If we approve it, then it's over.
If you table it, consider when you want to reconsider it.
Is it not dependent date?
All right. Now, typically, I usually try to bring it back around.
A year from now.
Well, I mean, as my mind's eye has to develop and grows, I mean, if it's not done at that point, if there's not been a deal made with other centers, other venues, the paths there that have to get done.
Sure.
I mean, I'll, would you agree with me? It potentially is a business that will be made with new occupants who are covered that, right?
Well, yeah, it just that where you are with the Star Bond development right now.
Yes, sir.
It's ready to open, or it is open. And really, I think the more access you can get to this development, with the retail sales in there and the resale sale potential, I think you're just, the sooner the better. That's that's my opinion.
Yes, sir.
For you, for the city.
Yes, sir.
And for us, like I said, yeah, we can do it, but it might be ten years before we do it. So if you have lots of congestion at Calo Drive and Crown Drive and you don't like that, then I guess you can go in and and then build it.
Yes.
Now, I might not be willing to do cop fifty percent cost share at that time, I say, well, I've lived without this long.
Right, right.
I say, well, you guys are on your own now.
I understand.
It's a, it's a public road, you can pave it anytime you want.
But you're saying your fifty percent is that blue dark blue line and our fifty percent is the green?
It's half the green.
No.
And the other fifty percent is gonna be passed on to the.
Yeah, councilman.
We're only talking about the green. He wants to pay half of the price.
Green?
Yeah, we pay half of.
I like how that's what he was gonna finish with, the dark blue.
We are.
That is, that's his.
We are.
The blue is gonna happen regardless.
Yeah.
But the green, we would still have to pay half. Well, we put it on special assessments.
So I'd like to make a motion. So first of all, I want to say you're a huge contributor to the growth for our city. With much respect to you, thank you so much. I'd like to make a motion to deny the request at this time.
Motion by Aubrey?
Second.
Seconded by Keaton, all in favor of the denial of the request, aye?
Aye.
Motion, yeah. Very, very.
Thank you very much. This is, oh, I'm just gonna go ahead and wait for that.
Yeah, wait back.
Mayor, come back. Okay.
Honorable Mayor City Council, this is item H point one, the special use application for seasonal bar or outdoor venue case number SUP twenty-three dash one. So a quick background, I'm Ben Healy of Healy Investments, submitted an application for special use for SUP. The use would be for a seasonal temporary bar and outdoor venue located around one hundred eighty-third street and US fifty-four across from Walmart. Developer introduced the possibility on April tenth before the planning commission determined the idea would be possible. The developer later presented an idea on April seventeenth to the city council during the rezoning of the land and the city council indicated that had no immediate objections. The applicant is now going through the formal process of applying for a special use application for those subdivision regulations that would contain permanent structures and is seeking approval for a seasonal bar and outdoor venue. Planning commission indicated that it does not seek to foresee any potential problems with the proposed idea and are making a vote to approve the special use application SUP twenty-three dash one. It was approved over a three-year timeframe, allowing the applicant to petition the planning commission and the city council for a fourth year. The final decision for the SUP would be before the city council, which is being considered today. So this analysis kind of reviews portions of the article thirteen of amendment section one oh one, and I will read verbatim. Because of the particular factors associated with activities, certain uses which might have adverse effect upon hereby properties or public character of future development of the district are not permitted outright in the districts, but are allowed as special uses which, when they propose the petition, is supplemented by additional conditions such as to make the use considered incompatible to surrounding property and neighborhood in the zoning district. So temporary uses are outlined in article six point oh one. A bar is not outlined in article six, so the developer is asking if they can be considered for a temporary use with a special use permit. The developer is asking for a temporary use delineation such that the general provisions under article three, one hundred point B for new uses of old structures will not apply. New uses of old structures require all zoning subdivision regulations to come into play. An SUP needs to be reviewed by the planning commission and approved by the city council. Publication is also required, allowing twenty days elapsed prior to consideration of the planning commission. City council, excuse me, city attorney confirmed that special use can be approved in time limits such that if there are any concerns or comments or thoughts about the planning commission and council, if they wanted a limited time for special use, it could be considered. So this is the bar location as being proposed. Since this aerial image is taken, this has all actually gone away and the developer has actually removed a lot of the trees around here and cleaned up this area very, very well and also this area has also been removed by Kansas Department of Transportation. This is a concept rendering that's designed by Law Kingdom, reflecting some of the ideas and concepts of the developer for that area. These are times of use, the planning commission asked the developer to delineate exactly when it would be open, how long it would be open and the duration of the seasonal use and the special use permit. And so summer schedule would be Tuesday through Sunday, fall schedule actively may be Thursday through Sunday. Times of being open would be Tuesday through Thursday, five p.m. to ten p.m., Friday, Saturday would be noon at midnight and Sunday would be noon at eight p.m. Months of the active would be May through October. They'd like to be open around Thanksgiving and Christmas, but obviously that'd be depending on the weather. Use operation for duration of the special use would be twenty-three, twenty-two, twenty-four and after, also no third option to be available. Planning commission approved twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four and twenty-twenty-five with an option, a third option to be reviewed by planning commission, city council for twenty-twenty-six. Financial and ordinance will have to be published to incur in a small cost. Legally, it is approved as the form. It is recommended that the governing body either waive the reading of the ordinance number one and also approve the ordinance for the special use application case number SUP twenty-three dash one for voice plus a roll call. But the developer is here, if you guys have any questions, feel free to ask me or Mr. Ben Healy, who's also on the tenants.
Well, like, it's in my opinion, I think we should approve. I think we're one thing in Goddard, we wanna grow Goddard, wanna bring people in and I think if we have an ambitious entrepreneur that wants to help, let's accomplish that goal, so.
I agree. The community Facebook page is constantly asking for of our real restaurant something and I think it'd be a good venue to have.
Okay. And do I have a motion to waive the reading?
I make a motion that we waive the reading of the ordinance.
Motion by Brent, second by Sarah, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Do I have a motion to approve the ordinance?
Make a motion to approve the ordinance for the special use application case SUP twenty-three one.
Motion by Keaton, second, second by Aubrey Rollcall.
Councilmember Fish?
Yes.
Councilmember Levan?
Yes.
Mayor Larkin?
Yes.
Councilmember Traylor?
Yes.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Will be ordinance number nine twenty-two?
Thank you very much.
What if you want, you saved the rest of the night?
Uh, okay, I just wanna say thank you all for, you know, that, you made it easy on me tonight. So I'm glad you're all in support, I was hoping we weren't on a trend from the last one. Anyway, thank you very much, I really appreciate it. We hope, I I could update you on all sorts of stuff, we talked to MABCD, everybody seems to be moving right along, liquor licenses coming along, so we really hope, we were hoping with an approval, possibly June second for an opening. Well, I've got some things to work on with Micah on the approach and different things, but I think we'll be quick, so thank you very much.
Share this vision in your head.
Uh, the vision of the, uh, the whole, the bar area? Okay, um, thank you. So again, Ben Healy, nice to see you all again. The, yeah, so we've, we've actually given you, given you a little bit of an update with MABCD, they said, yeah, the bar area is fine, we've gotta do a couple of things with exit signs and lights and wiring and covered outlets and things like that, but they, some very basic stuff, but they did say, no customers inside. If we did, they'd put us under some occupancy rules and some different codes, so we said, no problem, we'll, we'll end up having walk-up bars on the edges of the building and, and food, different things to sell for, for that. We do plan on here, these are, these are probably drawn a little bit forward, but these will probably start about here, these are food trucks and probably just create a little horseshoe there. So as you drive in, find a parking spot, this, we're gonna widen and gravel all of this here probably pretty quick and come in, there's an activity area, over here would be the food trucks, um, bar, walk-up around here, we'll probably also somewhere out here, maybe one or two spots, have a little mobile selling station or, you know, save the walk type thing, put some horse troughs in the covered area with people go up and buy drinks, what happened. Uh, this is drawn in as an activity area, which would be like bags, you know, cornhole, kind of like a trash pong game, we throw a volleyball into barrels and, you know, just stuff like that for all ages to enjoy. Uh, we have drawn in some like sand for spikeball, I do hope to do it because I really like spikeball. Um, so we'll, we'll see, but that's, that's all, yeah, activity. These are drawn in for covered areas, so we'll have some covered shaded areas, this will all be outside, but covered shaded areas in different spots. We have containers drawn in, I'm working with the owners at Simple Containers now about bringing some out here, so we'll make a kind of a final decision on how that, and really it'll just, those will just serve as a backdrop and as a wind block and a noise block, that kind of thing. We'll have some containers out there, we're not gonna use them, we'll lock them up. But we're working on getting those, this is drawn in for a stage area for a band, so we do hope to bring some bands in and, you know, hopefully they're not terrible and this is where they'd be. So sun's setting here, sun will be in there, eyes will kind of at your back as you're, as you're watching the show, so that's cool. Uh, these, there's actually some trees that we're gonna leave along here to provide some shade, kind of cast a shadow, it's here the other day, kind of down in this area, so at least some will be shaded. These here are fire pits, but this is one of the things that the fire department, as we met, they actually came out and took a couple of them, Brad Chris was one of them and they said, anything over three feet diameter, you know, can fall under a lot of their regulations, probably gotta call in a burn permit, because I had a massive one, you know, with big rocks and everything around it, it was really cool, but they were like, no, that, you know, that's gonna put you under a lot of supervision, so they said it's three feet in diameter and so we're, we'll figure out the fire pit thing, but I do think it's, we might throw a rager like once a year, maybe on Fourth of July and, you know, get a permit and, and make sure that's okay, but I think normally we'll probably just have some storms.
So your food vendors and all that, you're all variety, like local vendors, there's a lot, a lot of people.
For food truck type things or just vendors in general?
Oh, just food vendors.
Yeah, so we're trying to find at least, you know, west side, as close as we can for food trucks. And then vendors, we're, I don't know if my office has worked with the liquor store, but we were planning on talking to, so, you know, we were gonna have to go buy actual liquor from a liquor store and get that, so we hope we can do that with someone near town. We'll probably work with LDF and Coke bottling. Ice, we're gonna have to do ice, so we're kind of figuring that out right now. A lot of things are just like, we're, we're talking through and figuring it out now. So, but yeah, local vendors, whatever, whatever we can find locally, obviously what we lost it for, so. Anyway, that's, the music, there'll be music all the time, so we'll have, whether there's a band or not, you know, we'll have some music, covered areas, places to sit, places to get some food and drink and just really, I'm, I'm just kind of tired of losing to Wichita. I mean, we just get all Wichita secondhand stuff and we just lose to them constantly, so we'll win here and.
All the idea, love it.
Yeah, good, good, well, come, come by and see us.
For sure.
Anything else? I know you got something to say.
Listen, Fall Fest, they have this potato food truck?
Mm-hmm.
That you can like tater tots and stuff, so if you can get that, that'd be safe.
Okay, well, you know, if you, if you find that name, I'll call.
Hey, I know a guy who has a lot of vendor connections.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Maybe, maybe we'll do a, a Main Street Market after-party.
There you go, there you go.
No, I'm, I'm really excited, I think this is gonna be awesome for, not only for, for the community, but, you know, something that's, it's driven me nuts for years to watch thousands of people come to play baseball and then all of them hop on Calo and disappear.
Yeah.
And, and so I, I love the location, it's almost like you're putting a little wall because you know you can't drive right past an outdoor bar right after a baseball game, it's just not possible.
It'll just pull you in.
Yeah, so you're gonna, you're gonna suck people in, yeah, I'm so excited.
They will turn.
Yeah, thank you for, for your willingness to choose Goddard over Wichita, we appreciate it.
Yeah, you bet, you bet. Anything else? All right, thank you all, I do appreciate it.
All right. Honorable Mayor City Council, this is item H point two, this is administrative fee for temporary note petitions. So quick background, developers submit petitions to city council with consideration of financing improvements. These petitions ask the city if they would be willing to incur debt, finance improvements and have the debt be assessed against the properties over time. Those petitions come with cost estimates, contingency fees and administrative fees for that phase of development. When the temporary notes get converted to permanent financing in the form of bonds, there is a submitted to the bond attorneys which outlines those costs such as construction, engineering, administration, et cetera. The city would like to add a five percent cost for administration based on the true and actual construction cost to the total overall cost for the phase of the development, though they may be sent off to the county for special assessment. This fee would help recover costs incurred by the city for work done on new developments and this would help prevent the city at large covering those costs through the general fund, which is cash flow by tax deduction. So the black over here, this comes from article twelve, section one thirty-three point B, the black is staying as is, the green, which really got washed out with this projected productized for that, it'll probably look better on your agenda, the green is what we're proposing would be added. I'll go ahead and skip the black part and go straight to the green. Costs for improvements, design, constructed, managed, engineered and financed through the petition and temporary note and bond process shall include administrative fee paid to the city in an amount equal to five percent. The five percent shall be determined based on the true and actual design and construction costs of that phase of the development and collected at the completion of the assessment proceedings for that phase of the development. Financially, there are, an ordinance will have to be published to incur a small location cost, legally it's approved as the form. It is recommended that the governing body waive the reading of the ordinance and then two, approve the ordinance for the proposed changes to article twelve, section one thirty-three point B and the subdivision regulations. Since this is an amendment to the subdivision regulations, this was first presented to the planning commission, which approved it, there was a twenty days elapsed, that had elapsed prior to being presented and publication in the city newspaper, after which, if you feel this is acceptable, we would publish it and we'll put ordinance in the city newspaper and become official thirty days after that. But we do have a fresh showroom of Steve Wolf, who's a financial advisor, and Kevin Cowan, Gilmore Valley, who's representing us for bond, if you do have any questions about that.
None? Do I have a motion to waive the reading?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to waive the reading.
Motion by Brent?
Second.
Second by Keaton, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Motion to approve the ordinance?
Make a motion to approve the ordinance for proposed changes to article twelve, section one thirty-three B of the subdivision regulations.
Motion by Sarah?
Second.
Second by Keaton, all in favor, say aye?
Roll call, sorry.
Councilmember Fish?
Yes.
Councilmember Levan?
Yes.
Mayor Larkin?
Yes.
Councilmember Traylor?
Yes.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Will be ordinance nine twenty-three?
Thank you very much. This is item H point three, this is resolutions authorizing improvements for Bridger at Maple, phase one. So quick background, this is the first of three actions we take by the city council of the authorization, for the authorization of improvements. The second step will be the consideration of a resolution authorizing the solicitation of bids for the issuance of general obligation temporary notes. The final step will be the resolution ratified in temporary note sale authorized in the second step. Background, financially, the consideration will be presented as a single item under H point three through and analysis and recommendation actions, sections delineating each resolution for consideration, the acceptance of petition and consideration of the improvement authorized resolution can be taken in a single motion with a voice vote occurring after this motion and a second. So you guys have seen this before, we did this for Auburn Creek, phase three, this is gonna be Bridger at Maple, phase one. The developer is petitioning city council to ask for them to, for the city to incur debt through temporary notes and permanent financing for the improvements of streets, storm sewer, sanitary sewer and water grading, et cetera, for this development. Bridger at Maple is between one hundred eighty-third and one sixty-seven, just to the west of Maple Village and to the east of Elk Ridge, north of Spring Hill. So as mentioned, the resolution accepts petitions authorizes project and issuance of temporary notes to construct improvements for future bond issuance under the special assessment statutes. The petitioner is the sole property owner within the proposed development improvement district under KS eight twelve six A, or four, the property owners requesting no public hearing or notice be given. The apportionment of the cost of improvements between the improvement district and the city is to be assessed a hundred percent against the improvement district and zero to be paid by the city at large. Uh, so as mentioned, the resolution accepts petitions authorizes project and issuance of temporary notes to construct improvements for future bond issuance under the special assessment statutes. To petitioner as the sole property owner within the proposed development improvement district under K S A twelve six A or four, the property owners requesting the public hearing or notice be given. The apportionment of the cost of improvements between the improvement district and the city is to be assessed a hundred percent against the improvement district and zero to be paid by the city at large. In event all our part lots or parcels of improvement district are replatted or the ownership of single lot is, or maybe divided into two or more parcels, the assessment shall be calculated or recalculated on basis of the method of assessment set forth herein. We typically call that just a respread. So let's say they chopped them into smaller and smaller lots, we would do what's called a respread agreement so that if you have four lots and it turns into eight lots, people are all paying an equal amount for each of them, for these, for these improvements. All improvements are for the Bridger at Maple development and the following slides outline lots and blocks that would be assessed. And so H point three A is a resolution authorizing the sanitary sewer improvements for a total petition cost of one million fifty thousand. H point three B is a resolution authorizing the storm water improvements for petition cost of nine hundred fifty-four thousand. H point three C is a resolution authorizing street improvements for one million nine thousand. H point three D is a resolution authorizing water line improvements for a total of six hundred twenty-three thousand. So this is on its side. North is this way. This is Maple. Purple is phase one, which the improvements will be along inside of this purple area. Financially, there is a lot of text right here, so you can just read it. Legally, the proposed documents have been reviewed by bond council, Kevin Cowan, Gilmore Bell, and financial advisor Brett Shogren, Steve Wolf, and list of the company. It is in effect upon publication time set in a newspaper of record. H point A, resolution authorizing sanitary sewer improvements for Bridger at Maple phase one. Motion to accept the petition for the improvements, approve the resolution authorizing sanitary sewer improvements for Bridger at Maple phase one. So this is one of four, if you want to consider it. If you do have any questions, like I mentioned, we do have Brett Shogren, Kevin Cowan available. We also have, uh, Harlem Four Acre City Engineer, Brooke Brandberg, Public Works Director, Ryan Peck, myself, if you guys do have any more technical questions about it or thoughts, concerns, or comments.
Pretty straightforward. You got any concerns from staff? Yeah? All okay?
Did the math?
This is on its side, so north is over here. So this is Maple right over here. This is the first phase of development.
Is that?
Yeah, north is this way. Out here, you're in county land over here. This area over here is land that's in the city that's undeveloped currently. Elk Ridge would be further to the west.
Where's the two single family lots?
Single family's going to be right over here.
That's it?
Mm-hmm.
Now back up to that neighborhood?
This is backs up to X F Edition over here. These are the county lots.
Any questions? Right motion?
Make a motion that we approve, uh, phase one. Sanitary sewer.
Motion by Brett? Second by Sarah, all in favor say aye.
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 Very good. This is H point three B, the storm water improvements. Same, it'd be accept the petition for improvements and approve the resolution authorizing the storm water improvements for Bridger at Maple, phase one.
Right motion?
No motion.
Motion by Sarah?
Second.
Second by Aubrey, all in favor say aye.
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 Very good. This is H point three C, street improvements. So this would be the same, accept the petition for improvements and approve the resolution authorizing the street improvements for Bridger at Maple, phase one.
No motion.
Motion by Sarah?
Second.
Second by Aubrey, all in favor say aye.
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 Very good. This is H point three D, water line improvements. So once again, accept the petition for improvements and approve the resolution authorizing water line improvements for Bridger at Maple, phase one.
Right motion?
No motion.
Motion by Sarah?
Second.
Second by Aubrey, all in favor say aye.
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 Very good. Thank you very much. This is item H point four. This is an IRB request for Camp Bow Wow. So quick background, uh, Michael Schroeder of Camp Bow Wow has asked if the city council would consider a partnership for the request of industrial revenue bonds, IRB for the financing of construction of Camp Bow Wow. The city currently does not have an IRB policy, so city staff is using the same policy as Bel Air to outline the agenda item and give parameters to the request. If the city council wants to formally consider the request for an IRB, city staff will publish all necessary documents and have the developer file an application for the city paying a non-refundable fee of twenty-eight hundred dollars to cover the cost for the city slash professional staff, the cost benefit analysis and the publication cost in time set. So the governing body is determining if they want to consider an IRB, which stands for an industrial revenue bond, either in part and in full to Camp Bow Wow. If the city council wants to have a formal consideration of Camp Bow Wow, IRB request to follow would have to happen. Number one, an application submitted by the applicant and a fee paid for costs incurred for preparation of the documents, as well as understanding that the application does not guarantee an incentive. So this is a non-refundable cost of twenty-eight hundred dollars is not, that does not guarantee an incentive, that's why we're having a discussion today. A, there'd have to be a publication cost in time set, no, around three hundred dollars. There'd have to be an application fee of fifteen hundred for professional services and staff time. There has to be a cost benefit analysis, a CBA of a thousand dollars roughly. We usually partner Wichita State University for a cost benefit analysis. Total cost upfront would be around twenty-eight hundred dollars. Effort property tax abatement is to be considered. A public notice published by the city newspaper allows seven days to lapse prior to council considering the application and letters of intent sent out to taxing jurisdictions. Effort property tax abatement is to be considered, cost benefit analysis by the city. Typically, the city recruits the Wichita State University Center for Economic Development and Business Research, the C E D V R, to generate a CBA, which is a cost benefit analysis of around eight hundred to a thousand. A CBA can take about two weeks for turnaround time, so I've always spoken with W S U about that. Once the public hearing date has been established, city council will deliberate during the public hearing on what type of incentive to grant or if they do not want granted any incentive, the options would be as follows, sales tax exemption incentive only, property tax exemption in whole or in part incentive only, both sales tax and property tax exemption in whole or in part. And since the city, as, as mentioned, does not have a formal policy, is emulating the policy Bel Air, there are certain questions for councils to consider, since we don't have any, we're not going off of any formal policy, we're just kind of copying and pasting right now from Bel Air until we actually draft it. It's in the works, we're, we're writing it right now, but right now we're just borrowing from Bel Air. So questions considered, is this business unique or is there another business that provides a similar service? You want to try to typically avoid unfair advantages. What kind of jobs are being created? Are these high-end jobs, medium or low-end jobs? But for, understanding basically, if not but for, the incentive, will this project be able to catch flow and stand on its own? Um, and this is basically something that we typically want to consider. Does state law prohibit the business form from, um, receiving tax abatement incentives based on its North American industry classification, which is called N A I C? Uh, Camp Bow Wow's N A I C is listed as eight-one-eight-one-two, which is not listed as permitted use. And then any questions for bond council or the financial advisor? So these are some numbers that outline that development, but before I go into those numbers, I, in case I misspoke, it's always good to turn around, look back at the little dress gentleman and see if they have any comments you guys want to address in here that, if I misspeak, or if you have anything that you want to add, comments, turn around time.
The only thing I noticed, uh, on the previous slide, can you just clear it back just real quick? Number one references a sales tax exemption incentive only, and I just noticed, you know, that, that language kind of has a broad connotation where they can exempt sales tax for operations, things like that. And that exemption only applies to, uh, sales tax on construction related activities, labor, materials, things like that. So that's all that's all.
Yeah, so that's only for construction, uh, not for just anything in particular. Uh, one question I think is, how long does this typically turn around to prepare those documents for? That was a question I came up with for, for an IRB. If you want to address that in terms of.
Bond documents or just? The entire process?
The entire process, and probably bond documents, if you want to talk about that. That way it gives them a time frame.
Yeah, so from, from start to finish, particularly at the, the outset and the cost benefit analysis was referenced, which is only necessary if you're going to consider a property tax abatement. That's going to be, uh, at least two weeks sort of in advance of the hearing. If this is something you want to consider, you would call for the hearing, two weeks out, we would work with Wichita State on the cost benefit analysis. That has to be present, uh, at the hearing if you're going to consider granting the property tax abatement. So kind of.
But that would be a, a new agenda item.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, so sort of two weeks in advance of your first formal action, you would call for a hearing and know, you know, the next agenda, we're going to have a hearing, there's going to be some work done in the meantime with the cost benefit analysis. Bond council would prepare an intent resolution, uh, that you could adopt after the hearing that says, we intend to issue these bonds, grant a property tax abatement, whatever those incentives are. So that's two weeks. Uh, after that, the process is really dependent upon the developer or the business owner, just how quickly are they moving? The financing is one hundred percent their responsibility. So if they have financing, uh, with their bank, a bank, uh, their normal bank, we would take as bond council a term sheet and draft bond documents who would include all those terms and that's, I mean, if you really kind of push through it from start to finish, it's probably going to be a sixty-day process. Sometimes what you'll see is the business owner will get the resolution of intent, rely on that, go put together construction financing, either finish the project, nearly finish the project, and then the bonds would be issued at the end. So it could be that you do some work upfront with the intent resolution and hearing and then maybe it's six months or more. And this has happened on a couple of the city's IRBs where you don't issue them until the project is complete. So then there'd be some period of time there.
This has not been the first IRB that the city.
No.
I guess for a question that I've seen and I've had from the community is what does this cost the city of Goddard? Does this cost anything for us upfront?
So, so a sales tax exemption, let's start with there. If, with that, if you're going to grant that, then it would be the city's portion of sales tax on the overall tax burden. That's primarily, it's not difficult math. It's primarily a benefit funded by the state because that's the bulk of the sales tax. So if you give a project a sales tax exemption, it's mostly an exemption from state sales tax. Ad valorem tax abatement, I mean, going to depend on the value of the property and, and whether you grant a full abatement, a hundred percent over ten years, which is the maximum, you know, something in between. I think we've talked about that a little bit. Some of the city's IRBs have, you know, a hundred percent the first year in terms of an abatement, then eighty, twenty, or eighty, sixty, forty, twenty.
Stair steps.
Yeah, so there are a lot of different things, uh, you could do. The cost benefit analysis will, will outline sort of what the cost is to the city. Micah referenced the but for test. I think that's part of it. It's, initially it doesn't cost you anything. It's more of a forbearance, kind of. We're not sure this is going to happen unless we grant this incentive. Um, and so it will cost us something in the meantime, but it may not be anything we would have gotten if we don't offer the incentive or make it, you know, sometime later down the road. So it's, there's the ad valorem taxes that you forego. And again, that's going to depend on the value of the project, but if it's a couple of million dollar building and your tax mill levy is X, I mean, you can sort of do the math that it's going to be, uh, in the tens of thousands of dollars.
So just get it clear, if the council were to approve this or a ten-year stair step, it doesn't cost the tax.
Nothing out of pocket.
Out of pocket. It costs them deferred, right? They're, they're saying instead of us getting these taxes, we'll take a small percentage, you know, and then the stair step or the IRB.
Exactly.
So, okay, so we've got it clear.
So is the business where, where that? Okay, so first of all, does the, do, do they own the land already?
Yeah, so they will.
Is a lot of the stuff already done way before somebody buys a lot?
Well, I'm not sure what their location is, but all.
Saying this is already worked out before they ever come to town?
It's right next to Sonic.
Because now they're asking for stuff when they already own the lot. They're going to build no matter what.
That, that's correct.
No, that, that's part of the but for consideration.
Right.
It's, I don't know the answer to that question. They may own the property already and, and this may be their intention. Um, and again, that's for them to speak to, but if they don't get these incentives, maybe they decide.
They are here, the developer is here. I'm, I guess Brett, that was another point I can bring out. We, it's fine, you know, we might disagree on that and that's fine, but the city of Goddard has an opportunity to set a good precedent. We're always talking about setting precedents, setting precedents, setting precedents. But we have an opportunity to set a precedence that we're for growth. We're for growing, right? Okay? And we have an opportunity to say, okay, maybe we don't want to do a hundred percent ten-year abatement. Okay, but we can do a stair step. The, the taxpayer still gets, right, a business that comes in and the new developer, the new entrepreneur gets benefit for coming to Goddard. Because I don't care who you are, it's still a risk to come here and build a brick and mortar business in this town because there's not enough rooftops. So if we have the mentality where we say, oh, well, they're still going to come, so so be it. That's a bad mentality to have and that's a bad precedence to set. So you have to support them. That's my opinion. I'm just giving my speech.
Well, when I was looking to build and set my business, you know, there are going to be a ten-year tax rate in Britain, you know, but I decided to do it in Wichita instead and I didn't take one. But, um, the, uh, I don't think that it was that big of a deal, you know what I'm saying?
Might not be a big deal to you, but I think to a business that might have very slim margins, it might be a big deal. Every business is different. I help run a manufacturing company and our margins are different than other, than other manufacturing businesses, different than our crap. And so I'm want to allow maybe those businesses that are a tough business to run to be the most successful they can be. And I want to give them an opportunity with that. Yes, others possibly going to come without this, others probably going to come without this. I would say so. But is that the precedence we want to set? Or do we want to set a precedence that we're pro-growth? We're pro-development, we're pro-entrepreneur. That is the precedence I want to set. So that's why I'm voting yes for that. And I'm excited that they want to come and I, and I hope that other businesses want to come and approach Goddard and move to Goddard and set up a, a brick and mortar business here and invest in the community. Cause I, as long as I'm on here, I'm going to support things like this because that's what's going to grow Goddard. I'm going to be able to look back and be a man, look at all the things we did. Are there other businesses in this, in Goddard that provide the same services? I mean, what's their industry better?
We have Doggy Boutique, don't we? Do they, do they do boarding stuff?
What else?
I think that's, that's my only big concern, but I, I agree with Larkin that we want to show businesses, it, Goddard is going to grow and that has to happen now. We can't, we can't wait any longer to start growing. And so getting businesses to come in and having an incentive like this, I think is, is great to bring business, especially when it's things like what Camp Bow Wow is, you know, it's, it's a unique business and, and I understand we have one in Goddard, but from what I've seen, they're doing pretty good. They, they draw a pretty good crowd and, and so.
Sometimes they're both.
Yeah.
Since Kevin Cowan's not the developer, I'll just say.
Since Kevin Cowan's not the developer, I'll just say it.
I would, well, I was gonna add one more thing and this may provide some assurance. We've talked about the cost benefit analysis. You'll have that before you have to approve a property tax abatement. And it will, it's measured over the ten years of an abatement. Not, and I always caution, that's a very, very, very conservative way to look at things. That it's measuring the cost benefits just during the ten years of your costs. And that's not why you're doing that. You, you're not gonna offer an incentive for ten years so that somebody could leave after ten years. You want to get them established. And so the real benefit's gonna be after the ten years. So just wanted to add that. Through this process, you'll get a cost benefit analysis. It's not just gonna measure the cost of the ad- vorem tax abatement. It will measure new employees, people traveling to them, maybe they're bringing their pets, dropping them off, maybe they're stopping at Starbucks. And it takes into account all of those things, enhanced sales tax receipts because of those things. And probably, again, will give you an opportunity to look at it. If it's more than one, that means notwithstanding the cost of the ad- vorem tax abatement, you're getting that benefit during that ten-year period. So I'll stop there.
So, so basically, this agenda item is us saying, we don't have a process currently, really? This is the process that, do we want to establish this process and this cost?
This agenda item is to, is basically to get a pulse check of the council so the developer doesn't have to spend the money upfront.
Right, because we don't want them spending it upfront or an automatic, nope.
If you guys automatically felt like, no, this is not gonna happen, then you don't want the developer to spend twenty-eight hundred dollars to be told no in a month or so. So it's just, it helps them save that cost because the city does incur costs, as mentioned, Kevin Cowan, Rich Shogun, everybody else. We incur those costs and so, like I said, we usually, they would be required to pay that twenty-eight hundred dollars, not just for the city staff's time, but the thousand dollars for the cost benefit analysis, the three hundred dollars for the publication, et cetera. So, you know, they spend twenty-eight hundred dollars and then just be told no in two weeks, which is typically try to avoid that. And I know it's difficult because each project could stand on, you know, you wanna look at it independently based on sort of a merit-based criteria, which is what the cost benefit analysis is for. So it's almost like, you want them to pay the twenty-eight hundred just so you can review all the criteria and then maybe make a decision later at a later point? But if you felt like you already had a determination inside already, at least they, he could be aware of that. And so to try to help bring about some more clarity to that, I've already outlined the math on H point four analysis, just so you can kind of have an idea of what you are foregoing and just try to look at it that way. That way, you don't, you, we don't have a cost benefit analysis, we don't have the formal application because at this point, we're just determining if council's even in favor of it at all. So that's what we're looking at. So that's what this outlines is, the proposed building valuation would be around one point five. Total potential appraised value would be one point seven. That's with the land, so one point five is for the building, with the land is one point seven. City tax would be around thirteen thousand nine nine five per year. Total taxes per year would be around sixty thousand three sixty-two, which includes the state, one point five, the county at twenty-nine point three six eight, Goddard at thirty-one point three oh nine, school district at fifty-four point nine four nine, and the county fire district bonds seventy-eight point nine one two mills. A ten-year, a hundred percent of city property taxes, of, city property taxes would be around one hundred thirty-nine thousand. A ten-year, a hundred percent abatement of all taxing jurisdictions would be approximately six hundred and three thousand, six hundred and two. With one exception, the school district has a protected eight mil total potential abatement, which would be, which would then reduce to six oh three, six twenty to five five nine, six twenty. Labor for original construction of a commercial facility exempted without IRB issuance, but allocation of the cost of the project and labor materials is unknown. City sales tax for, let's say, fifteen, excuse me, one point five million of construction expenditures would be around fifty thousand dollars. Total sales tax exemption would be around a hundred twenty-seven thousand five hundred, which includes the city, county, and the state. So the state has a six point five, the county has a one percent, and we have a one percent. So as, as Kevin Cowan mentioned, the biggest forbearance is really the state sales tax because they have a six point five percent and we, we have a one percent. So we're foregoing, you know, about fifty thousand dollars, but therefore going a lot more.
I think staggered, the staggered stair step, it's, it's better because we're still getting an incentive, but yet we're not just foregoing a decade's worth of our taxes.
Right.
So there's mutual benefit on both sides.
I would concur with your reassessment. So it's, yeah, I, I don't hardly believe that too. We have to go, and I, I think your, your analysis is, is right on.
It's always easier, most of the time, to just say no. Because you're afraid of the backlash, right? You're afraid, afraid of what you might read on Facebook and things. It's harder to say yes because you'll get ridiculed because you say yes. But what's better for Goddard as a whole? And to my opinion, that would think progressively and-
Yeah, well, if you're thinking in those terms of backlash, you're not looking at the big picture. You're not looking at the twenty-year mindset of where we want the community to be, you know? So that's exactly right, so.
My, my only concern is, is Doggy Boutique and, and not hurting them in any way. That's, that's my only concern, you know? I think we have incredible businesses here that, that we want to continue to see them grow as Goddard grows. And so, you know, if, I, I don't know, that's my only hesitation is I don't want to give Camp Baowow, sorry. It's just funny to say Camp Baowow and Doggy Boutique, so I'm sorry. I, I just don't want to hurt a business we already have. But I, I also think, you know, I've, I think Doggy Boutique's been growing and, and as far as I've heard, I think they're even looking to expand to a new building. And so obviously, there's a market for this.
I think that goes back to Brent's comments is, how does this, you know, does this really affect, right? And I think to those comments, that's capital. We're not trying to help one business over another by doing this. And that's what some businesses might perceive this as, oh, they got it and I did it. This is to simply grow the city of Goddard and to incentivize more people to come, right? And so I hope that, you know, this money per year, thirteen, fourteen thousand dollars, doesn't give that much of a leg up. But that's not the goal here. The goal is to help grow, right?
Well, and, and just for clarification, if Doggy Boutique were to come in a couple of weeks and say, we want an IRB to build here, are we then allowed to do that again? Okay, I just wanna make sure that it's not like, well, if you already have one for this business, you can't do it for another that's similar. I mean, I'm, I'm all for helping Goddard businesses in any way we can, so I think it'd be great.
I'd like to make a motion to accept consideration of a formal application by Camp Baowow.
Motion by Sarah?
Second.
Second by Keaton, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Thank you very much.
Well, I'm staying for the rest of night, or on night. Do you have anyone adding for you?
No, I just want, I appreciate you guys' opportunity to let us move here and, yeah. I mean, I'm pretty concerned with Doggy Boutique. I mean, a lot of people think we're competition, but really, we're finding our own league and they're gonna be fine just with us. I mean, we cooperate a lot of-
Yeah, that's another question, how old are different?
Yeah.
What would that set you apart, just to resist you apart, so?
The, the biggest thing, I, I heard this from a guy, and he tells the marketing staff, we ought to market. It's like driving a Ferrari versus driving a Ford. A lot of people are driving Ford or the Ferrari. I mean, everything in our place is gonna be off-notch, off the line. I mean, it's the way we do things, so. And, and you're, you know, about the, the, the benefit and stuff, I'm just looking for that upfront, the first few years. You know, fifty percent of businesses in the first year fail, ninety-five percent after five years. You know, the margins, the ramp up, that's what's gonna be crucial for us. That first, first year, first five years is going to be crucial. We're, you know, to be honest, we're dealing with this with going through with people. Right now, they don't have a lot of that, so it's going to, you know, getting this is going to help us through that ramp period and save some money that I can now turn back and throw back to my employees, you know, to get better employees and stuff, get in more, so. That's, that's my goal with this.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks for chipping Goddard.
Thank you.
How's the puppy I didn't win?
What's that?
How's the puppy I didn't win? Is it okay? Is it doing good?
Yeah, it found a new home.
Okay, good. Okay.
Yes.
I cried.
And we are breaking ground next week as we are coming, so we'd all be invited to that, so.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, sir.
See you there next week, so.
Have a good one.
Thank you, everyone.
Take care.
Thank you very much. This is item H point five, so this is a Spring Hill HOA block party road closure and sound waiver. So quick background, Spring Hill HOA would like to host a block party on May twenty-first on the north and the Spring Hill Drive between the hours of three PM and eight PM. They have submitted a road closure permit to host this event and proposed closure has been reviewed by the public works department. The event will have amplified sound with music and announcements that will be audible a hundred fifty feet away and will require a sound waiver approved by the city council. So this is an analysis, this is what you would typically see for most road closure or major events that require a sound waiver. This comes from chapter eleven, article thirteen. So prohibited no person in open space or within a structure, whether public or private property shop operate or permit operation of any sound application system so that the sound is plainly audible at a distance of a hundred fifty feet or more from sound application system. Exemptions, the system was unauthorized public activities such as parades, fireworks, sports events, music productions, or other activities which haven't approved by the governing body of the city of Goddard or the department of the city of Goddard authorized to grant such approval. The event requires a road closure permit which has been submitted and received. The event requires sound waiver which is being considered by the governing body today. So this is a portion that'll be closed. This has been reviewed, as mentioned, by the police department and public works department. This portion, by closing this, allows everything over here on East Spring Hill Court to be able to exit onto the north to Maple and anyone over there on North McCray Drive, North McCray Court will be able to go on the Spring Hill Drive and exit onto one hundred eighty-third. It'll come this way, connect to Spring Hill and exit onto one hundred eighty-third.
Is this the same road closure we did last year?
Yes, yeah. Small publication cost because it is a sound waiver, so you need an ordinance. Legally, it's approved as a form, it is recommended that the council waive the reading of the ordinance and then to approve the waiver for the sound ordinance for the Spring Hill HOA block party and road closure request with a voice message or call. If there are any questions or comments about this?
I guess they don't have a rep here?
Say that again.
Did, did, yeah, did anybody?
No.
I'm just trying to get an invite.
Actually, that's-
It just sounds like a good time.
It's actually just for me to go fishing, so.
There you go.
No, it's, uh-
No, I mean, I think, yeah, no, I'm trying, ooh, sorry.
I'll just send an invite, I had one last year.
Thanks, I appreciate that. No, I think, I, I love, I love the idea of this kind of stuff and, and it's what makes communities so, so like Goddard to be, so fun to be a part of. So, yeah, I think it's great. I'll make a motion to waive the reading of the ordinance.
Motion and second? Do I have, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, do I have a motion to approve the waiver?
Make a motion to approve the waiver of the sound ordinance for the Spring Hill HOA block party and approve the road closure act.
Motion by Sarah?
Second.
Second by Keaton, roll call.
Councilmember Fish?
Yes.
Councilmember Levin?
Yes.
Mayor Larkin?
Yes.
Councilmember Trailer?
Yes.
Councilmember Collins?
We spelled it in the inbox, right?
Yeah, right.
Yeah.
Can we get the guests?
Yes.
Be ordinance nine twenty-four.
Thank you very much, this is item H point six. I think this is the treasurer's particular list agenda item.
This is an observation for the street projects we discussed previously. Mayor and city council have identified a couple, uh, street projects need to be addressed this year. These projects are too costly to be funded through the city's annual street maintenance program. Funding will need to be secured through general obligation bond and paid over a twenty-year term. The action tonight is the first three actions to be taken to authorize the improvements. The second step will be consideration of a resolution authorizing the solicitation of bids for the issuing of bonds. And the final step will be ratifying the bond set up once it occurs. The improvements we're considering, we've identified are, you know, before I get to which projects, uh, they are, the projects, the bond for the project can be authorized to the city's charter order is number twelve. Resolution for consider, for consideration authorizes street improvements in the city, including but not limited to, limited to construction of North fifty-four, North US fifty-four front of the road from one hundred ninety-ninth street approximately half a mile east to, for me, how far is that going to be? I think it's about a half mile.
It would go approximately half mile, yes.
About a half mile. So essentially to where the, the portion of the front of the road in front of season is actually-
Good, just vermeer.
Yeah, so we're vermeer, so basically all the part of the front of the road that needs, needs to be rebuilt. It would also include second street paving from Main East to one hundred ninety-ninth streets, so the unpaved portion of the second street. And then the third project, we're using the amount that it would be to pave Hawkins Lane if that project goes through. If that project does not go through, we will use those funds for other streets that the staff, particularly the public works director, will identify, that we will do this summer as part of an extension of our regular maintenance program. But we do have streets that need to be, have, that need, that are, would qualify under our, you know, long-term project guidelines for this type of, of, you know, a twenty-year term to repay, so not just the stuff that we do like basic maintenance we do. So this, it would be, we have, probably, we haven't identified yet what we could do this year that would qualify for this type of financing. So like I said, rebuild a station of the north US fifty-four, so North Collin Frontiers Road, we talked about, that's the big chunk of it. Uh, second street is the next big one because we're gonna have to, they're gonna have to go down, rebuild the base and then pay it on top of it. Hawkins Lane, and again, that's assuming that we do that project with half of that, those parts actually being assessed tangibly. So in this situation, we would not be paying back that full amount, we'd only be paying back half of it with half of it being assessed to tangibly. Again, assuming that project goes through. And then financing costs, which includes interest and any issuance of these. We estimate the debt service, depending on interest rate, would be between one hundred twenty-five, one hundred fifty thousand dollars a year. We would fund it with a portion of the city's one percent sales tax. It would be some cost for publication related to the issuance. The proposed documents that you have in your packet constructed by Catholic Kevin Cowan, we weren't, uh, approved by the city attorney. So again, we recommend, recommendation is recommend the city council approve the resolution authorizing the improvements and financing of the improvements to GEO bonds. Again, we'll have other actions coming to you, assuming you want to do the project to secure the actual financing.
Matt, can you go back to the projects on the list? I guess, is there any questions on any of those potential projects, concerns? I mean, it's really three projects.
Four wheel of Hawkins Lane.
I, well, we-
Yeah.
We're-
Well, so I reached out to the neighbors because they came and spoke and I've been reaching out multiple times and I can't keep, I mean, I'm talking to them, but they don't ever give me an answer, so. I, it doesn't seem like they're that interested because if they were interested, then they would have told me yes by now. And we have to have a hundred percent approval from all three neighbors to do that. I guess when it comes to Hawkins Lane in particular, I would say that if we don't get all three yeses by next meeting, we move on.
Okay, well, the reason that we're presenting that total tonight, not, and the way that the, uh, what you'll be proving is, what you'll be considering is written, is it is not, we do not have to do Hawkins Lane, we can use that for other road projects.
Fair enough.
But the reason we're doing it tonight this way is because the timeline is frustrating because of the holidays coming up over, over the next couple of months. So if we want to get this done, you know, this summer, early this fall, we need to get this process started now. So that's why we're including that tonight, even though we may not do that specific project.
And, and I agree with Hunter, I think because of our timelines and because this is a big project that needs to be done, we need to keep our infrastructure, get it up to where it needs to be. It's, we've neglected it for far too long. I agree with Hunter. We have a meeting in three weeks. If we can direct staff to send a letter to those three homeowners stating, we need your response within three weeks for this council meeting. If you don't respond, we will consider that a no and we will be moving forward. And then we can put it towards something else because there's plenty of roads that we can fix. And I agree, I, the numbers, you know, it was, Matt, what number can we do and afford? And I know the list is long of things we can fix. But I don't want to spend any more time, if Hawkins isn't gonna get done, if they don't want it to get done, we have other things we can fix. So I think-
And we'll need to be careful, be sure to identify projects that would be worthy of a twenty-year investment because that's what we're doing.
Right.
Okay, so now let's say hypothetically, neighbors don't agree, we don't get response back, so we don't know what to do, and so we're moving forward.
Well, that, that would, that would only really matter at the, at the, you know, specific phase where we have identified, we identify what project we're gonna do. So for the purposes tonight, our, the resolution you'll consider is worded as such that you, we don't have to have that decided tonight.
Okay, so what we're, what we're ultimately tonight talking about is, do we want to do one point seven two?
Correct.
And that, that still keeps us under that, that ten million cap we talked about at the last meeting?
Uh, it's, you know, it's, you know, gonna be the cost of what it would be with all the issuance fees, all the interest that would be represented. And we will still be under that with this amount. But also, it's, it, for my sake, and the sake of all of us, but my sake in particular, for, you know, part attack reasons, it keeps, it puts us at a doable annual debt service amount.
But let's be clear, clarify for everybody that even if we go over that ten million dollars, it's not like growth stops. It's not like, it's not like residential development is stopping.
It changes the-
Again, this, because we're, because we're gonna be repaying this at large, you know, for the whole city. We want to get that absolute best rate possible. So that's why we want to use it for that. Whereas these other things, the other types of debt we'll be considering, we'll consider in the future that may, you know, put, take us outside of that bank qualified, non-taxable area. Those, a lot of those projects we're gonna be considering are gonna be, you know, those are private developers, so we don't need to put our, we don't need to get the absolute best rate because we're still gonna get a great rate regardless of those projects.
For, yeah, ten, ten million is really a-
It's almost not worth talking about, but that's an argument.
The lawyers are like, yeah, you should tax them.
That's all.
Because they get paid by the hour. You're getting, so they're taking a lot of money.
That's why they're smart.
Okay, um, I guess-
Okay, I guess my question to the council is, do we want to do this bond so we can repair some of these roads that we have presented? I think it's very important that we, especially, I think we need to, we, we need to redo the north front of the road. I think it's all.
Yeah, it's horrible.
Russ is gonna be affected, I mean, but I hope it doesn't, you know.
And the benefit of that.
He'll be happy when it's done.
The benefit of doing that project now is we should be able to time it to coincide with the R-cut construction. So it's not necessarily happening at the same time, but resources will be mobilized at, around the same time so we can get them knocked out together, or one right after the other.
But this, this type of project, this type of bond, has been talked about and talked about and talked about since I've been on this council and never got done. The minds never got together, everybody talked and dreamt, but nothing ever happened. And so this council finally came together and says, we're gonna do something. And we're gonna get something done. And we got with the staff and we actually worked. Unlike other councils in the past who just sat on their hands and didn't do nothing. So are we gonna choose to do something?
I make a motion to approve the resolution authorizing the improvements and financing of the improvements through GO bonds.
Motion by Sarah?
Second.
Second by everybody?
Second and a third.
Second by Brennan, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Thank you.
I'm the mayor and city council. This is item eight point seven, which is to consider the continued support of interjurisdictional sidewalk. So quick background, in twenty nineteen, the city in partnership with Central County and Wichita submitted a partnership letter to support an interjurisdictional sidewalk. Sidewalk would run from one hundred eighty-third Street East along the south side of Maple to one sixty-seven. Once it crossed over to the east side of one sixty-seven, which is the Wichita side, it would drop south about three hundred feet to the schools. But also at the same time head north and continue east along the north side of Maple until it turns main instead around one hundred thirty-fifth Street. Originally, the project would include a cost share from the city for a portion of the out-of-pocket cost that WAMPO would not fund. Central County was recently approved to move forward along with this project. Application process for funding portion and Central County has determined to allow all of that out-of-pocket costs not paid for through the WAMPO funding being paid for by Central County's capital over the bottom, which is the CIP budget. This means that it no longer has any out-of-pocket cost. However, a portion of the project is still in Goddard and asks that Central County wants to make sure the city is still wanting, willing to move forward with the partnership. And Central County would like Goddard to write a letter of support for funding request by Central County for additional funding to cover the twenty percent not paid for by the WAMPO project funding. Main Development Director has already written a letter of support to Chad Marazza of WAMPO, the director of WAMPO, to express support. If this is no longer reviewed, the city's city staff will contact WAMPO and let them know that they no longer support the project. The governing bodies are terminated, they want to continue to support the building of an interjurisdictional sidewalk. It starts on the southeast corner of Maple, one eighty-third, runs to the south side of Maple, water until one sixty-seven. Runs on the east side of one sixty-seven, south to the school area, runs east to one sixty-seven to the north side of Maple, which is about ten feet. This is the multi-use path exhibit, this is presented by Baughman, this was submitted back in twenty nineteen. General Ramon was staying, pretty much the same, but you'll notice some of the districts have changed since then. Financially and legally, proved as a form, it is recommended, oops, it went too fast. It is recommended city council approve the continued support of the interjurisdictional sidewalk along Maple. We do have Central County here to represent the project, please. So if you have any questions for Central County, they are available, no questions.
I like Teresa.
Yeah. You all want to help there?
Whether it's the others next.
By the way, this, this is Mr. Packer, the county engineer, so if you wanna give him the opportunity, I'm sure he'd be happy to speak.
You don't have to give him.
Well, this, this is the project we're talking about right now, so, but we can talk about it, he can stay awhile.
I think that, I mean, there's been talks about some type of contribution from the city in the past now, it's gonna be all paid for. And so I think we're, we would be foolish not to.
That's the direction I like.
Move forward. Good evening. Yes, as of right now, we are, what this is all about basically is a grant opportunity we have. In addition to WAMPO funding, we have an opportunity to get a carbon reduction program grant. So basically, it's exactly what it sounds like, it's metal, it's funding from the USDOT that would allow funding for projects that reduce carbon emissions. Which obviously, in this particular case, our, our, our big push is the idea that the sidewalk goes down in the Eisenhower school complex. And kids right now, they don't really have an option, they walk on the shoulders or the ditch. Some of them still do it, but this would give an opportunity for more kids to ride their bikes or walk to school. And therefore eliminating those, those parents needing to drive and come down there. So I will note that although we do believe if we, if we can get all this funding, everything will be in place. I'm not going to totally take away the option that we may come back to you at some other, at some point in the future. Just because of what's happening with construction costs and, and it, there is, you know, if things get crazy and it's just outside of our budget, we may come to you and the city of Wichita to potentially talk about that. But if we can get all this funding and, and move forward, things are looking pretty well.
Is this on both sides of the street, or one side of the street?
In this particular case, it is one side of the street. So as Mike had described, on Maple Street, it's on the south side through Goddard. It's on the north side through Wichita, and it's on the west, excuse me, the east side of one hundred sixty-seventh.
Well, I think there might be some, you probably don't have park benches in there, right?
We do not have any park benches.
See, we're gonna have to do park benches.
Stop offering these.
You have to excuse this gentleman.
Fastest bet on all. Since I launched, right?
Well, that would be, that would be up to us later. I guess my only advice is get moving on it fast and you already know that, so. I mean, for us in particular, we have the, the two, there are eighty acre plots, right, Micah?
Seventy-two, seventy-seven, yeah.
Okay, so, I mean, those will be able to use it, they've got all the, all the homes to the south, so we have a benefit. So I would, I would say we should improve it. This project is currently under design by Baughman. They are, they've already submitted clarity plans, getting ready for their, I don't think they're up to, I think they're up to office check, which is kind of right in the middle of the design. And everything's looking pretty good. In addition to what we described there, obviously there would be a crossing at one hundred sixty-seventh and Maple as well. That would be incorporated to the existing traffic signal.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor? Yes, could we ask, will this tie into the, the existing sidewalk the city has at one eighty-third?
Very good point, yes it does.
Oh, really?
Yes, it does, it does connect all the way over one hundred eighty-third to your existing sidewalk there.
Okay, awesome, very good. While I have you here, completely different subject, but the one eighty-third and Pawnee intersection?
Yes.
There was a wreck.
There was.
Too long ago. What can we do about getting a four-way stop? I know I talked to Commissioner Dennis about that. He mentioned doing a study, school's getting ready to be out, so the traffic count's gonna be lowered. But one day, one of those kids are gonna be leaving high school and they're gonna get hit by one of the trucks. And then we're gonna do something.
Yes.
And so.
The, we have been, since twenty twelve off and on, we have been looking at that intersection. Ever since about, I believe, don't totally quote me, but I believe twenty nineteen, we have been in September running daily, or excuse me, in September doing an analysis of that intersection, basically looking for traffic warrants. We look for traffic warrants, not only for four-way stop, two-way and four-way stop, but also for traffic signals. To, as of this past September of twenty twenty-two, it did not need any of those warrants. The, and I know that's, I, I've had to say that more times than not, but, and that's always very disappointing. However, we are also currently in a contract with KDOT. And they're having a third party, basically consultant, do a local road safety plan. It was supposed to already been delivered to us over a year and a half process, but during that process, the date. So right now, the latest date is, they should be giving us our final report in June. As the Trans Systems is the consultant for District Five, KDOT. And they have given us preliminary data, nothing, no recommendations, nothing like that. But part of this plan is to look at every single intersection, every single unincorporated road in Central County that's paved. So what they've done is they've come up with a list of recommendations. Most of those recommendations aren't going to be, do this at this intersection, do this at this intersection. It's going to be systemic type of, type of recommendations, things we haven't maybe done that could be done at certain areas. However, my understanding is there will be a short list of some that they identify would be potentially up there for some type of a recommendation. And based on a map they've shown us, very, basically from Pawnee and one hundred eighty-third over to one hundred thirty-fifth, has been highlighted with no explanation. They have, they basically have preliminary, given us a map with red marks on it, that to me suggests that they would have potentially recommendations for those areas. And one of those was not the intersection per se, but Pawnee from one hundred eighty-third over to one hundred thirty-fifth.
Mike, Mike, how many houses on Pawnee, houses duplexes, did we approve between one hundred eighty-third and one hundred sixty-seventh?
Oh, uh, on Pawnee?
From the.
So Big Horns got twenty-nine and got chosen, has two hundred lots, it means eighty duplexes, one hundred quarters. We have one hundred nine duplexes and one hundred twenty-seven, we have.
Between one eighty-third and one sixty-seventh?
And one sixty-seventh, no, it's two fifteen.
East, yeah, I think in east.
Oh, excuse me, oh, one sixty-seventh, yeah, sorry. So there's two hundred twelve, so that's, you got them wrong ones. Two hundred twelve lots, so I think there, it was a sixty-four school on that one.
Were you, did you just want the duplexes or did you want all of them?
No, no, I'm saying the studies that they're doing, does that take into consideration, hey, we're about to, we have two hundred twelve lots right here that we're building on.
We've got one sixty-seventh and Colwich, we've got how many lots going there on Kelsey's Development?
Uh, so, there's two hundred twelve, one hundred sixty-seven, twenty-third, and there's forty-four off Goddard, the Prairie Travelers, and there's other, I don't know how many of them are off the trail there.
We've got, we've got a development more on one sixty-seventh and Pawnee, we've got Harbor Creek, we're moving into the next final stage. And then we've got one ninety-ninth and Pawnee, and then we have two fifteenth and Pawnee. And I guess just take that into note, we've got a lot of homes going in all along Pawnee there. And I hate to say it, but it's gonna be one of the kids' fault. They're, they're not gonna pay attention, and we're gonna drive through, and then we're all gonna be upset that we have a real situation. And so, I, I know it's not your fault why it hasn't been happening, but all it takes is just, we need to, we don't need a full light even there. I mean, we just need to stop and just take control of all that.
And I, I will note, yes, we are looking at that. In fact, our CIP that we introduced, again, a little further away from you right now, but in, added into our CIP this year, if approved, I, I bet it's, August will be approved, but if approved, we have a project on Pawnee starting at one hundred thirty-fifth, going one hundred fifty-first. And that's the idea, we carry it at least to one hundred sixty-seventh, when it would carry it out. And I will note, you may have already talked to Harland, but we're very careful about adding or changing intersection controls. For example, going from a two, two-way stop to a four-way stop, sounds simple enough, but all of a sudden you have all these people who are very familiar with Pawnee, suddenly coming to a stop that they never have to in their entire life, and they are gonna run it the first couple of times. And that is something that, so one thing we will never do is, for example, take a two-way stop north-south and make it, switch it to east-west. You're just begging for trouble. The other thing we're very, very careful about is adding a stop sign condition onto a road that has traditionally been in an urban area, or suburban area, through fair. So we do look at those, I'm very anxious to see what the recommendations are from a third party independent audit, to see what they have recommended. And then hopefully move forward with additional projects. I'm also hoping, I'm a fan, I am, I don't know what you guys think about him, but I'm a founder of roundabouts.
Yes.
And we have tried in the past to get them successfully. I think we have a commission now that would back that. So I'm also hoping in the near future we'll have roundabouts in our CIP as well. They are great intersection control mech, uh, measures. So, and that's, you know, as long as you don't use them too frequently, too, you know, they're great, great intersection control measures, so I would see those. Pollen?
Does it take a study to get an advanced warning sign to say like at least there one eighty-third and Pawnee that, you know, one hundred eighty-third street traffic does not stop, it does not stop? Can that be added?
Yes, that is something we can look at.
In, you know, advance of the stop sign that we have there from both sides, you can, to advise or remind the young driver that traffic does not stop.
Harland brings a very good point, anything of advanced warrant.
And the flashing stop signs, or is that, is that not?
I'm sorry?
Flashing stop signs that?
We're very careful about the flashing stop signs. I always use this as an example. When you look at something that is constantly flashing, whether it be like we use red balls on top of the signs, or you may have seen them around town, a little bit maze-like some, where you do the LEDs around the stop signs. They look great and they get your attention for a little while. But if you're a familiar driver, like for example, I, yeah, I drive a maze, my kids go to maze schools, I drive up there all the time. I don't see the flashing lights anymore, day or night, it just. So I'm a fan of, for example, like hog signals, where it only flashes when someone's about to cross the cross, the crosswalk. That gets your attention because it's not on all the time. But Harland's right, we can definitely look at advanced signs and advanced warning advisory signs. The other thing is very surprising that we've learned, and it's very simple. Placing red reflective tape on the stop sign posts underneath the stop sign, actually has shown to have a sixty-seven percent reduction in correction rates. That came to us straight from KDOT, so I don't, I hesitate to question it, but that seems really odd. But we just put some of that tape up on twenty-first and one hundred sixty-seventh, not too long ago. And it's, they have studies that show the reduction there. And that's a very simple thing that you can do. And that we've done and will look at doing as well. So sometimes it's, the simplest measures are, are the biggest improvements.
Right. Well, thanks for.
Addressing that, yeah.
Yes. Yes, back to this. Do I have a motion to send the letter?
I make a motion to send a letter of support.
Say a motion by Sarah, second by Aubrey, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. This is item H eight, this is the treasurer.
I'm just gonna turn this over to our.
Thank you.
With Imagine IT, Andrew, he's my primary architect there, we work with for all of our software support and many, many of our hardware replacements as well.
Okay, council, mayor, this proposal is for improved security at the, at the city in regards to their cybersecurity. So what, I'm not gonna get into the details for reasons I don't want our tools to get out or whatnot for proprietary reasons and for, no, security reasons. But basically what's happening right now in the industry is we're starting to see layers of security come into, into play. So what's happening is hackers will get into that first layer and get into the whole network. So what is now needed is layered security. So last year we went through the process of getting multi-factor authentication for the city. But now we need that, that second and third layer of security on the backend. So essentially what that means is if a hacker were to breach that first layer, right, they can get into the network. What we want to do is implement increased security. So if they do get in there, we have the second level and that third level that can go ahead and knock out whatever's, whatever's attacking. And, and clean it all up nicely, and just clean it up and get rid of it. I think that like a football team, okay, you have your defensive line, they get past first line of defense, you've got your linebackers there. They get past the second line of defense, you have your safeties there. That's what we're trying to establish. So it's, it's, right now your security is, we just haven't increased the security platform other than MFA for a few years now. So now what we want to do is get that next level of security for the city. The cost associated with that is just an upfront cost of deploying all of our tools, getting some training, and then there's a recurring cost of just under thirteen hundred dollars. So this is kind of lining up with cyber insurance and best. Uh, so this is kind of lining up with cyber insurance and best practices as well, along with some compliance. So, insurance companies are realizing what it takes to protect companies so they don't have to pay out ransomware fees. And so what they're doing is beefing up their requirements, and which in turn goes back to the people that need cyber coverage. And so that's really, so there's a, the best practice piece, there's a cyber insurance piece, and there's a compliance piece. That's all what we're trying to propose here for approval is covering. And then again, what it does is puts a layer of protection in your cyber security environment, your cyber environment. Protection servers, protection users, obviously there's a lot of, you guys protect a lot of people's information, right? Uh, and so downtime on that is great, along with, along with reputational risk as well.
Um, Matt, as far as the financial to this?
We build in budget for upgrades to our infrastructure, electronic infrastructure every year. I don't know that I necessarily built this much into it, but we have reserves available to use this year. It will be included in the budget. So what I'm saying is, I, I, I budget things.
We're good.
We're good, yes.
Yeah, we're good.
I know how much we're gonna be doing.
Okay. Um, do we have any questions? Management, I think we all wanna make sure we're soft and safe.
Exactly.
I mean, is there any concerns from any of you guys?
Yes, I, I have, I have, I went to a finance conference a couple of weeks ago, and, uh, we heard from, uh, I sat through a presentation from another city in the Wichita metro area about, and he was showing us just the amount of attacks they're getting daily on their system.
Sure.
And it scared the academy, so.
So you're in favor of?
I'm in favor of this. There have been several cases of ransomware attacks throughout the state recently that are, you know, from what I've heard from Andrew as well as other people, they know Kansas is the prime target right now for these type of attacks.
And, and, and hackers are evolved, so they go after specific people. Like, as an example, Matt, because of his title, he deals with certain information that if they get into his stuff, or, you know, whoever, that, that's really important information that they can get and then try to hide ransomware back. Um, so there's, there's, there's a lot of risk, and it's not a one-seed, two-seed, it's, it's organized crime essentially is what it is right now. So you have offices that are doing this, hacking the first level, then they actually stop, sell that to different hacker organizations, then they breach the rest of it, and then they lock you out and trip you in ransomware. So that's kinda how that all works.
Okay, any questions? Any more? You okay with it?
I make a motion, will you approve the H eight?
Okay, motion by Brent.
Second.
Second by Keaton, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay.
Is everyone sufficiently scared of him?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you, sir. Oh, Terry's gonna do it.
Mayor and City Council, this is a selection of an executive search firm for the city administrator. On March 30th, we have sent out requests for proposals to executive search firms to assist with the recruitment process for the next, uh, city administrator. Uh, Mayor Larkin had requested that we also reach out to the League of Kansas Municipalities as they provide a similar service to assist with filling city executive possession positions. Uh, the league announced on April 24th that if, that they will be partnering with Deardoff Consulting LLC to provide executive search for municipalities. Um, and Deardoff Consulting was one of the firms that did submit, uh, a proposal. And this means that if he was chosen, then the league will work with John Deardoff to fulfill the terms of the contract under the RFP. Uh, five bids were received by the deadline for submission of proposals. Uh, Deardoff Consulting LLC proposed 14,000 plus travel and miscellaneous expense. Baker Tilly, and I'm not sure how that's pronounced, or Chow and Kraus. That was 26,950. Transreach Talent LLC, 22,500. Government Professional Solutions, 22,500. And the Arnold Group, uh, came up with 30% of the first year total compensation. Um, I did not include these in your packet, but they were sent out, and I believe you all received, uh, those proposals. Um, I did create a, uh, just not in here, a comparison of the cities, but there was really just too much information to include in the, uh, for a breakdown. Um, but Deardoff Consulting, uh, was the lowest bid for 14,000, um, which was 8,500 below the next lowest bid of 22,500. Uh, he has 40 years of experience in local government and in the state of Kansas. Uh, he's conducted over 20 city administrator-manager searches in the Kansas area over the past four years while still employed full-time and since retirement in 2020. He has also served as the interim city administrator in two Kansas communities, and recently completed a six-month tenure as the interim executive director of the Kansas League of Municipalities. So it is recommended that the city council select one firm to provide the requested services, reject all proposals, or table for clarification of information submitted in a proposal to investigate the ability of a firm to meet the required needs of the project.
Okay, uh, I will note that you all in your agenda packet, that chart that Terry prepared was included in there showing a breakdown of costs and credentials and whatnot. Um, John Deardoff, I spoke, if I had a referral to him from a buddy out in Garden City who lives in the city, they had used him for a high-level city possession order, things with him. He's got the unique experience of having been a city manager at multiple stops, including most recently in Hodge before he retired. Um, Baker Tilly is another, uh, reputable, uh, really good search firm with a lot of experience specifically with, um, municipalities. Uh, they're a little bit, they're on the higher side as far as cost is concerned, but in looking through their packet, there have been a number of cities in Kansas who have contracted with Baker Tilly. Uh, Transreach, I didn't see any indication in their proposal that they have any experience with regard to working with municipalities on searches. A lot of tech, a lot of manufacturing. I just think that searching for a, a government official is just, it's a very unique, uh, process, is a very unique position, is very different from working in a private sector. And so I think that we should be looking at somebody that has specific experience working with cities or counties or other government agencies. And then obviously Government Professional Solutions and the Arnold Group, they both have experience with municipalities, Arnold Group's a local group. They're either based out of which parts I think, I don't know. So, you know, um, that's a little.
Well, I guess when it comes to the financial sense of it all, Deardoff is the cheapest, and they will also, he will also be getting help from the Kansas League of Municipalities, which, um, I believe that the league said that they weren't capable of doing it themselves right now, but they were gonna help Deardoff. I think with Deardoff, we not only get an experienced person for the cheapest bid, but we also get the assistance from the Kansas League. So, I think it's a no-brainer. I think it would be foolish to table this conversation because, uh, it would be a disservice to the community. We need to get moving, we need to find somebody. So, I think if we do anything tonight, we just need to move forward. Um, is there any comment to that?
When I read through the proposals, um, I liked, like Ryan said, the fact that Deardoff has served in a position that he is working to fill. Because I can go hire an accountant who looks good on her books, but I've never been an accountant, so I don't know the data bank functions and all the things. So that, I think, is a big bonus. And the press tag is a lovely bunch, so.
I think him being a local guy too in Kansas, I mean, the most likely candidates are gonna be the ones who have ties to Kansas.
Yeah.
Or who are already here. And he's gonna know the lay of the land, and be able to tap on some shoulders. And that was one of the things that he talked to me about when I initially started. You know, at that time, the league was doing their own searches, but because of conflicts of interest, and given that all the municipalities are members of the league, they couldn't be going and tapping on the shoulders of any of their members in full need to say, "Hey, uh, Mr. Manager in Gandober, do you have any interest in this position in Goddard?" They couldn't do that. And so, right, and, 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 you know, he's got more flexibility to, to be able to do those sorts of things.
Um, I guess, Terry, the only question I have is, we choose to move forward with John. Um, how's the soonest, when's the soonest that, I guess, me, you, and Ryan, I'd like to have a phone call on when is he gonna be able to get that, I mean, how fast are we gonna be able to move?
What I was, what I was thinking is, I could run a contract, uh, for approval of the next meeting, and I was gonna call for him and see if he could come.
I'd like that.
Be here.
That'd be awesome, yeah, I'd like that.
Okay. Does that work for you?
Yeah, does that work for everybody?
Yeah.
You won't be here.
I, I trust you on the hand.
All right. Uh, do I have any more comments?
I mean, I think the odds of finding somebody that experienced who's also been in the position and happens to be the lowest bid, it's a, it's a no-brainer.
So, Brent?
I think skilled with the lowest bidder.
Okay, do I have a motion?
Or make a motion.
Motion by Keaton.
Second.
Second by Sarah, all in favor say aye.
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 Okay. On Peter's track.
This is where I check from here.
The suburb has a, well, the city has a John Deere 6415 tractor that we use for mowing and other miscellaneous tax tasks. Um, we took it to Prairieland Partners to be serviced recently, and while they were serviced, they found some metal shavings and a differential. So, um, since it's just having to be repaired, it needed to come in and get additional spending authority to have it done. Um, the known cost of the repairs is 9,113.77. Total cost repairs right now is unknown until teardown diagnosis is complete, but should not exceed $15,000. Um, we're requesting spending approval of $50,000 to repair John Deere 6415 tractor. Fun cost will be determined during teardown diagnosis, as I just said. Um, the total cost should not exceed $15,000. We allocate 100% to equipment reserve, streets, repair, and maintenance, equipment, illegal. Any questions?
Colin's allowed to vote if he's wearing a John Deere hat, that's like an obvious.
Can you, can you come fix it? We need a hat.
The second I saw his hat, I was waiting.
We can buy a new one for $15,000.
You're gonna help? No. You won't get a hat for $15,000.
Is it, is it added?
I was gonna say, yeah.
Well, I don't know, they won't give us a hat anymore.
They only give you a hat when they sell you one, huh?
Uh, yeah, yeah, you don't wanna buy green anymore, honestly.
Okay.
Make your opinion.
We don't own our farm anymore.
Okay.
Uh, but anyways, a good tractor needs repair, asking for, spending it not to exceed $15,000.
Yeah.
I make a motion to approve the repair of these 6416 John Deere tractor costs not to exceed $15,000.
Second.
Motion by Sarah, second by Aubrey, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
That's what it is.
Auburn Mayor and City Council.
Do you guys wanna take a 15-minute break?
No.
This is out of H 11, this is a letter of support for the moderate income housing grant. Quick background, American Rescue Plan Arkansas stimulus package was passed in March 11, 2021. This stimulus package provides grant opportunities to stay in the form, uh, some of them in the form of moderate income housing grants. These modified grants have a minimum amount of $650,000 and a maximum of $345 million. Rick Warner is actively looking at requesting an MIH financing in the form of $2 million to build multifamily apartment building in the Starbarn Genesis Development area. Apartment development would consist of about 100 dwelling units, 50 one-bedroom units, and 20, and 50 two-bedroom units. Resolution attached, uh, was drafted by Paul Sinelli, the law firm representative of the developer, and approved by Robert Cloaking, Donald Morris Lang. The city council is considering if they wanna approve the resolution for the moderate income housing grant. There's no cost to the city, the grant would be for $2 million to build an apartment complex in the Starbarn Genesis Development area. This resolution does not guarantee the grant, only shows support for. Total proposed construction cost for this development would be around $15 million. Uh, this is the proposed area for the multifamily development. This is the softball diamonds, the baseball diamonds over here. This is in the bigger Starbarn Genesis Development area. Um, the pickleball and sand sports are over here in this area, and the success restaurant bar will be over there. Financially, non-legals approved as the form. It's recommended that the government body both either one, approve the mayor to sign the resolution for the MIH grant, or two, deny the signing of the resolution for the MIH grant, or three, table the agenda item. Uh, Paul Sinelli gonna be here today, near Rick Warner, but Paul Sinelli said if you guys have any questions that I can call him, then he can answer those questions.
Okay, so just to be clear, Dave?
No.
Um, just to be clear, this doesn't approve apartment complexes as we're doing, and just like what we did with the other thing, this is just allowing, um, Paul Sinelli and Mr. Warner to submit the application to the state. So then I can send the letter and sign it to the P.
Saying, yes, we support you.
But there's multiple steps that happen. This is, there's multiple steps that will happen before, I mean, I mean, this is just to say, "Hey, can we get this grant?"
Right.
Can this guy get this?
Yes, right, right.
Yeah.
Right. But should we call Rick Warner just to say hi?
If he wants to.
Do we, do we have any questions?
I do, I.
Okay, any questions? Keaton? Aubrey?
I'm sure.
Do I have a motion?
I have a motion to approve the I, MIH grant for the mayor to sign the resolution.
Motion by Brent.
Second.
Second by Sarah, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Good.
Very good.
Okay, government body comments. Keaton?
Over there.
Well, hold on, I promised Aubrey last time I left.
Yeah, Aubrey's starting.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Aubrey.
Yeah, Aubrey's always upset that you always beat him.
I'm gonna take notes and then make sure.
It's good to be able to fill all meetings. Um, I think everything's going, going well. Um, I love the fact that we're having open talks. I love the fact that we can debate things, and then, uh, the vision, you know, that's, that's foremost what I recommend, you know. We think we're making decisions on right now, we look, looks like 10, 15, 20 years. That's, that's the whole mission here, right? So, all the growth, um, I'm glad everybody's here and has a good crowd, and that's really all I gotta say.
All right.
Oh, yeah, okay, so here we go. Let me see, last week we went into, uh, North Park. We saw the building. What happened to it?
What happened to which building?
The North Park. Did you find out about the wells, the water wells, or anything on it?
Uh, no, I mean, we haven't gotten to details of it. I mean, we went out and looked at it on Friday, there's a horse stable that looks, a horse barn I should say, that looks relatively intact, but we'd have to get some more architectural review on that. There is a water well that has water there. I don't think it functioned though for serving residential uses, they could function for commercial use.
Was there a problem with that? The land or?
A problem with the land.
How about the auction, did you?
No, we're starting to put together a compilation of everything that wants to be, that we would want. No, we're starting to put together a compilation of everything that wants to be, that we would want to bring on the June fifth meeting for council to consider to auction off. There was a bunch of rusty fencing and there's a smaller building that could be potentially demolished. That's just sort of a cleanup effort on the north land to get it, start prepped for future development for the North Park. But we haven't got any vids or anything put together or anything. Right now, we're just putting together, we're itemizing what could be potentially being sold as scrap or somebody to come out and haul it off to get rid of some of the fencing. But that would be a consideration for city council on June fifth if they want to report.
Do you want some of the fencing? Like a Mad Max car or something?
No, no, no. We can auction it off, try to convert the money to build that fence next to the house that we said that we built.
There's a private residence next to the North Park land, and there's an agreement between the city and that resident that we would build a fence around this property. It was sold by Mr. Jim Fouts as a private resident. And so in that agreement, we said we would put a fence around it. So we haven't acted on that yet, but some of the thought was perhaps if we had some salvage from demolishing the smaller building and the recent, you know, and the selling of the scrap fencing, we could probably, you know, portion some of that cost towards building a fence, but we don't know what that looks like. And that's just something that I have to consider by council, you know, publicly during this regular year.
And then I have one other thing is, remember this house back here? That really bad, ugly one? Would we find out about this ugly building right over here?
So.
The one that you can see the shed that's falling apart on the side of it, that everybody looks at?
So what Councilmember Taylor was referring to is the Kempel property that we demolished because obviously it was unfit for habitation. There's a property on Main Street that's starting to be in a state of dilapidation and decline and perhaps could be classified as blighted. Our code really lays out light and unfit habitation, particularly as it pertains to dwelling units. So Kempels was more of a slam dunk situation. This one might be a little bit more complicated, but we have to look at it. I don't know if necessarily we want to lay out.
The roof looks like it's getting ready to cave in on it.
Are you talking about north of Fourth Street, north of here?
I don't know. We want to identify the property right now. They're in public meeting, but there is potentially some code violations that might be able to be applied to certain commercial property on Main Street. And we would have to look into that. As mentioned, the code for the city is drafted with favoritism towards residential and dwelling units as pertains to unfit habitation. Not, not as heavily towards commercial, so we'd have to look at what that would look like for code violation. But in terms of light, it certainly would be qualified as a blighted impact on the city.
All right. That's all I have. I'll ask about it again next week, in two weeks for now.
Keaton?
Yeah. Kind of a long, long meeting tonight, but thank you guys for, for being here and those of you that stuck it out. We always, we, we really do always appreciate that. I think that we're starting to get moving on some things that have needed to happen in Goddard for a very long time. And I'm very excited to see where this, where this takes us in the future. So, you know, as, as we get through the summer, we see some of these repairs that should have happened long ago. I think it's just going to continue to make Goddard look better. And it's going to make Goddard, it's, it's going to help bring in businesses and ultimately it's going to take Goddard to where we need to get. To where we're a community that's thriving and not just one that's surviving and, and fighting for survival. So I look forward to that. That being said, listen, this cup was so pretty this morning that I spilled it.
On your daughter.
Why'd you say that?
My daughter knocked it out, my daughter knocked it out of my hand. But anyways, co-follow. I did their grand opening this weekend and it was an incredible turnout. And Jeremy is, is just an incredible business owner. I've loved getting to, to visit with him. So if you haven't stopped in there, make sure that you do. And that carries into Main Street Market. We're less than a month away. And I'm so stoked. We have over thirty vendors signed up as a whole, but we will have at least thirty that will be at the first market. And, and I'm, yeah, sorry, I'm, I'm getting really excited just thinking about that. Goddard businesses are going to start seeing exponential growth. And, and I'm very, very excited for the opportunity that Main Street has. As we continue to grow over the next few years, I want to make sure that we start from the inside out. We don't just destroy the businesses we already have because we have some incredible business owners in this city. So we're going to take care of them and then we're going to boom around them. And, and I look forward to hopefully being a part of that.
Sarah?
Just to clarify, no babies were harmed in the spilling of the coffee press design. I'm excited with the progress we've made in the last four months. I think we've come together and the council and the staff, we've done a lot of hard work. And it's exciting to see things actually happening and getting done. And I want to thank the staff for working on the road projects and figuring out what we need and figuring out how we can get the geo bonds and all of that to get our infrastructure fixed. That's all I got.
I'd like to tag on the end of that. As you know, there, elections are coming up this year. And we had a lot, several months ago, we had a lot of participation here with people with different opinions and enthusiasm, energy. I just encourage you, you know, people watching online and stuff, I encourage you to run for office. If you think you can help make a difference with this community, open arms. Let's do it. We want new faces. We want new ideas, some growth. I just recommend that, you know, if you're thinking about running, step forward. Let's do it. Love to see you on the ballot. But that's what we need is a growing community. We need more ideas. We need more people with different perspectives instead of the old hand, the way it's happened several years. So I just bring in the energy and just encourage folks to, to step up and come forward. Love to see that. Community Garden, we're getting quotes on that. I already talked to you about that. Bank Movement, we're doing good on that?
It, it, it's on my to-do list.
Okay. But we're, we're working on that. I want to see this bond get done. I want to see this road improvements get done. This is going to be huge for the city of Goddard. Huge. And I, I can't wait to where we can actually turn some results and start showing the people. We keep talking about it and government moves slow, even though we're, it doesn't look like we're doing anything right now, but we're actually getting a lot of the paperwork and all of the procedural methods done. So I'm excited to see what we're doing here on this bench turn into physical proof that what we're doing actually is good for this community. And I can't wait to show the rest of the community what, what's going on. So that being said, we have an executive session. And I need a motion.
I need a motion to recess into the executive session under KS A seven five four three one nine one to discuss personnel matters involving city employees to include the city attorney, police chief, and the city clerk. We will reconvene the open meeting in the city council chamber at ten P M after a seven minute break.
Motion by Sarah.
Second.
Second by Brown. All in favor say aye.
Aye.